Well, the first thing is your zoning, your rules and regulations say one tree every fifty. So, the draftsman puts, and I stamped the plan, so I'm just saying what the draftsman does, but it's my responsibility, shows a tree every fifty feet. We do that so the town engineer can count the number of trees and put it in for bonding. But, let's just say in the sense of Warren Lane or other subdivisions I've done. What happens then is when it comes time to actually plant the trees, because now there's driveways in the way, water services, sewer services, gas services, electric services, walkways, other things, we go out with the town engineer and the tree warden, cite the trees, talk about the species, and they plant the trees, and then that's the end of it. But, in this case, in Olmsted, both the town engineer who was Margaret Walker and Barbara Blank, both gone now, seem to wash their hands of this. So, I do have, if you want to go formal with a modification, I do have all of the abutters, the homeowners there have signed a petition to modify the plan, just to simply place the trees in the locations that they, the homeowners, and I guess mostly the homeowners, feel appropriate. I mean, a number of trees come out in the driveways, so we're not going to put them in the driveways, so that's all. So, I'm not really sure what the procedure is, if it's just a minor modification. Go ahead and handle it with the tree warden and the town engineer, or if there's some other process we need to follow.
What do you mean, "wash their hands of it"? Were they opposed to it, or they weren't, and they just didn't discuss it?
Yeah, for some reason, they didn't want to get involved with it.
Was it their last day?
It was at their retirement parties. I kept saying, "I'll meet you tomorrow." They just washed their hands of it. They wouldn't give me a decision, so.
How have the number of trees changed? How have the number of trees changed?
No, the number of trees is going to be the same as on the approved plan. It's just the actual locations of them and the species of some of them, because some of the homeowners have actually planted their trees that they want to have. They don't want more trees, they just want those trees.
So, what you're going to come up with is you're going to have the correct number of trees, it's just going to be a different spot. How come Margaret didn't do like field change? She was ready to change roads once upon a time as a field change.
Right. It's going to be just in a different location, but in the locations...
This is no different than the field change in a pipe, if you hit a boulder or coming through someone's yard, right?
Yeah, it's exactly like that. Like I said, we have at least two trees that are actually right in people's driveways, and clearly, we can't plant trees in people's driveways. So, the number of trees will be the same, the location will be in compliance with your rules and regulations, and they're spaced, I mean, I have a plan that shows them, they're spaced in, you know, more or less in accordance with your regulations, they're just not exactly every fifty feet.
This one shouldn't get beaten anymore, but all the trees located on the plans do not have any locations, meaning there's no ties to them.
No.
If I went out there, I couldn't say this tree's two feet off.
No.
No. So, therefore, it's not on the plan as a dimensional thing.
Right.
It's, we want how many trees, and that's it. So, to me, that would be a field change, so rather than belabor it, I'd make a motion to just say it's a field change, which it is, just to avoid driveways and anything else.
Second.
We'll handle it with the town engineer and the tree warden, to make sure that the number of trees, et cetera, is the same.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Can I just, if Carl is okay with that, just like, signing off?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, yeah, okay, aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Take your easel and go home. You don't want tonight, John?
We do, I have two more, actually. Well, one's going to be handled by Attorney Greg White.
Okay, so we'll leave that. You can leave your easel. All right, we have one, Pulte, major, minor?
Did we do the vote?
We did.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah. About this one?
Yeah, yeah, so it can be on TV.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members, and also, thanks for making time for us this evening on your schedule, we appreciate that. My name is Reed Blute, and I work for Pulte Homes, and we're currently, we're on the agenda tonight, as you can see, for a determination of a major, minor modification, for a request for a clubhouse, a building, a structure. So, I believe that in our package that our civil engineers submitted in December, there's rendering of the building and then a set of plans. Also, our engineers here tonight, Matt Leidner with Civil Design Group, and I'm going to hand the microphone over to Matt in one second, but he'll be happy to answer any questions, and he has, you know, some large-size blowups of all the plans that were submitted, so we're prepared to go through that as deeply or as shallow as the board would like. I think the first question, piece of information that I'd like to throw out is, well, why are we doing this now? I mean, that's an obvious question. The community, which, where marketing name is Pennington Crossing, it's at the former Walpole Woodworkers site on East Street, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, and we commenced the sales and marketing of the property this past spring and April, and since that time, we've met with dozens of prospective new homeowners and citizens, respective new citizens of Walpole, and some are current citizens, who just want to relocate, but we've talked with quite a number of folks, and one of the key comments that came back time and time again was, you know, gee, we really like the location, we, you know, we love the one-floor living that we're interested in, and the parking garage underneath, however, we were, one thing that's missing is a building to meet in, to socialize in, sort of a community building. So, that's really what we've proposed here, is to add a community building, and it's proposed to go up in the front corner of the property. You know, Matt can go over the details, it's relatively small, thirteen hundred square feet. So, why don't let Matt take over the discussion and...
Well, let me explain all the process between, because this is site plan, it's not necessarily your special permit, because you're not changing AQV, you're not adding units, you're not taking units away, you're just changing your site plan and adding a building.
Yes.
And when you come in front of us, it's up to the board to determine major, minor. Minor could be something as simple as you change the post and rail fence to a solid fence, just something that doesn't really, no one could care, not care about, but it doesn't make an effect on any of the surrounding properties or anything, it's minor nature.
Yes.
A major modification is typically, you just do the process again, but just focusing on that, and typically, that's something that, you know, someone who, one of your neighbors goes, "I don't remember that," and that's what we're here tonight to do, and that's what we'd be voting on, to tell you whether, which way to go. My consent, my sense right now, as I'm sure you can see, is just have your file for that, but just want to let you know how, and some of the members haven't been through this yet either. I don't think we're going to say this is a minor with a new clubhouse right on East Street, that's a little bit, it's where the trails are, right?
Yes.
The sales office.
It's a little bit behind this, that sales office, you're right, yes.
All right, so if you want to give us a quick, so the members can understand and...
Give you the five-minute condensed version.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Matt?
Good evening, board members, and Kate. So, Matt Leidner with Civil Design Group, 21 High Street, North Andover. So, as Reed mentioned, the clubhouse is proposed on the project now. It's intended to supplement based on, supplement the amenities based on the feedback they've received, but it will also replace what was formally approved on the plan as a gathering area, which was a gazebo up near East Street, and also, in the rear of the property, there was a property manager office that was proposed and approved, and there'd be a space in this clubhouse that would house the property manager. So, two structures would go away and then be replaced by the clubhouse. So, as Reed mentioned, it's about thirteen hundred square feet. It is justified up, as you see in your submission, toward East Street, but it does meet all zoning requirements, so it does not change any of the bulk and dimensional requirements of what was provided on the approved plan. We've gone through the zoning table that was on the approved plan, and the change in terms of lot coverage, impervious area, is so de minimis, because we're taking some structures away and then putting this in. It actually doesn't affect any of the proposed, provided numbers in the zoning table that was approved, they don't change at all with this. Of course, it doesn't affect density, because there's no units proposed in the clubhouse. It does meet the fifty-foot perimeter setback that is required in zoning for AQV fifteen-acre projects, and that's an overlay, so the clubhouse will actually be in the underlying business zone for which the setbacks are only fifteen feet. So, this will be fifty feet back from East Street, as opposed to the underlying district, which would only be fifteen feet. So, it's much farther back, because it's part of this AQV fifteen-acre project. The clubhouse will be about twenty-four feet in height to the peak of the gable roof. Sixty feet is allowed under the AQV fifteen-acre project, so it's well under the maximum height. It's over a hundred feet from the closest building in the AQV, twenty-five feet is the minimum separation, so it well exceeds that. The parking, if you look in the zoning, under the parking requirements for a private clubhouse of this nature, it would require three spaces. We are, there was a surplus of parking, from a zoning perspective, there was a surplus of parking approved on the site plan, so we're still well in excess of what would be required from a zoning standpoint for parking. And as I mentioned earlier, it doesn't affect any of the lot coverage or impervious coverage calculations, the numbers don't change at all in the zoning table that was approved. Because the change is in the hundred-foot buffer zone of Conservation Commission, we did submit to them as well, and we'll actually be in front of them next week on this, but we don't anticipate any issues with them, so the clubhouse is in an area of the site plan that was already within the limit of work, so we're not proposing to change the perimeter, limit of work, or a limit of disturbance whatsoever. It's within what was proposed to be disturbed, and it was all previously disturbed as industrial area when it was a Walpole Woodworkers site, so we're not changing that limit of work at all with this change. And so, from our standpoint, it's, we're basically deleting two structures, consolidating into this one new structure. It meets the AQV zoning. We did submit to the building commissioner as part of the process when we submitted to this board, we did not hear any comments. We are confident that it meets all zoning requirements and surpasses them. It exceeds the underlying zoning requirements, if a business-related building were to be put in that area, by being fifty feet off instead of fifteen feet off the property line, it's farther away from any abutting residences than the existing former house that was on that property. It's actually significantly farther away than that former house was, that was demolished as part of this project. So, we therefore request the board's approval of this as a minor modification.
As a minor?
Yes.
Okay, well, board, discussions?
So, can you tell me, just so I get my bearings, the front door, is that facing, what's facing East Street?
The front door's not face East Street, it faces to the east, which is into the project site.
So, is it the side with no windows that faces East Street?
No, no.
It's the other side?
Right, so Pulte, so in the rendering that was provided to the board, the colored rendering of the clubhouse, it's not the door side, but it's the left side, if you will, with the windows.
Okay.
So, we understood and took into account, and Pulte did, that the clubhouse is, you know, part of it, one wall's facing East Street, so in terms of landscaping and architecture, we made, we made efforts to make that, that wall as attractive as possible, so there, and part of what we submitted was an updated landscaping plan, in which no landscaping was omitted from what was approved, we only added to it and moved some of the approved landscaping, just based on where the building would be located under the proposal.
So...
So, it supplements what was approved in terms of landscaping.
Personally, I think it looks really nice. I, it's Joe Moraski, when he was on our board, had asked repeatedly about why you weren't having one, and that was exactly where he was intending it to be placed. I think it's, I think it's a benefit to the project, I really do. I'm leaning towards a major modification, though only because we had so many neighbors that came to the hearings, and I don't necessarily think they'll be opposed to it, but I think they should be aware of it, so that they can see it and comment on it and ask questions if they have any questions, but other than that, I don't have a problem with the project. I think it makes a lot of sense, and I think it looks nice the way it's designed. I just think we do have to consider, because we went through those hearings and we, you know, they, they weren't difficult, they just had questions and wanted to know what was going on, and I think it, we owe them that, to let them know that there is going to be a change and that, what it will be. But, other than that, I think it looks great.
John?
Is the clubhouse one or two-story?
One-story.
It's one, just with a cathedral...
One-story with a gable roof over it, yeah.
Yeah, certainly, utility lines for restrooms.
There are restrooms in the clubhouse, and all the utilities will be able to tie into what was approved in terms of the on-site utility means.
And the, I forget the term, the site manager is going to be, his office is going to now be located within the clubhouse?
Yes, so there's a room devoted for the property manager, so we're able to delete that other building off the site plan.
It appears that you said there's a minor modification to basin one. Is it just relocating it, or is it changing the size of it?
It's, well, both. It's not relocating it, it's slightly reshaping it, one end of it, the southern end of it, toward East Street, because we will be, the proposal is that the rooftop of the proposed clubhouse, so even though we're deleting some other structures, they didn't all flow to that same exact study point that we, that we modeled the stormwater, so we would be sending the rooftop of this new structure into that detention basin, basin one, and we submitted calculations, we ran it in HydroCAD, to show we would slightly reshape that basin, just to gain, it's de minimis, but it is, there is a slight increase in the capacity, so that we don't affect the rate of runoff, both flow and volume, out toward that study point. So, there's no change in the overall stormwater runoff at the study points by reshaping that basin. But, it's only that one end, and it's, in our opinion, very minor, it's just tweaking it to accept that rooftop.
So, the basin comes up right to the clubhouse, but there's no exit from the clubhouse on that side. Is there a walkway around the clubhouse on that side?
No, there's access on three sides, so the east, west, and southern, so East Street side, the northern side, which is the side that would face the basin, does not have a walkway around it. We have a small area of landscaping, enough that a landscape contractor can maintain it, it's wide enough, and then we go down into the basin.
I think the illustration is fine, it's a good idea, I'm sure the customers will want that, but I have to agree, it probably should be considered a major modification, but I'm in favor of it.
You all set, John?
Yep.
Just one comment, it might have been helpful to show the existing structures too on the, yeah, on the sheet, just so you can see where the difference was, the size, but...
I, comment well received. We, one of the sheets that we submitted was a comparison, so it shows the approved structures, the gazebo and the property manager office, and we showed that in red.
Oh, okay.
And then the proposed clubhouse in green, to, for sort of a comparison.
Do you know which plan that was?
It's a six.
Six?
Yeah, there were two sixes.
Yeah, I got a couple of sixes.
Right, so the ones, so hang on.
It would say site plan.
Oh, I see.
See, there's the red.
Okay.
That's the old configuration.
I'm starting to figure out why there's some of the sixes.
The old gray and red.
Okay.
And other than that, I would also agree with Katie, that I think it would be, it would be a major modification, give abutters the opportunity to give input to the board.
So?
Okay. I'm pleased with the change, I think it's, you know, better for the community, give them a place to gather. I like that there's a patio area, they can be outside, there's grills, I think it's a nice addition to the community, so I'm pleased with that. I have one question, and that, is there, are there steps that go into the front door?
No.
Or is it a ramp?
It would, well, there's a walkway that would come in flush.
Okay.
So, it's completely ADA and AAB accessible. That may be misrepresented on that rendering.
Okay.
But, the, the front entrance and the rear to the patio, everything's flush, there's no steps anywhere.
Okay, all right, that's good. And then, just a quick comment, that the dimensions from the lot line should be added to the plan.
Okay.
So, we can see that, you know, it's within that fifty-foot setback, but...
It's actually slightly more than fifty feet.
Yeah, so just add that.
Sure.
But, I would just echo the other board members, you know, it's, it's not a huge change, but I think it's big enough that we have to, you know, hold a hearing and notice the public, make sure CONCOM is okay, make sure all the calculations are okay, and so, but, but I'm pleased with the change, so.
All right, I'll make a motion that deems this a major modification.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, see you in a couple of weeks, probably, as soon as you got it.
Thank you very much. Do we, you know, please vote it on the six, is that finished?
You wouldn't have the stuff to us and the...
It has to be advertised, maybe four to five weeks from now.
Yeah, you have, you have to advertise.
Yes.
It might be the second. February, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. I'm going to jump out of order, only for Mr. White and Mrs. DeJama, because I'm sure she doesn't want to hang out here all night, listening to us. So, we have an A&R plan for Summer Street? All right. We have an A&R plan for Summer Streets, it's not public carrying, it's just approval not required, pass it to everybody. Greg, if you just want to, go ahead, give your name, so you can get some people call you up.
Gregory White, representing Frances Jamer, she's the sole trustee of the Jamer Realty Trust. Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for your time. This is an A&R plan, and you'll see Mr. Glosser's prepared in the margin on the right, that we're subdividing her residents, the residence itself, one of the major concerns whenever I see it, is whether the existing residence, not the one that he's actually creating a subdivided extra plot, whether they then render a non-conforming on their primary residence, and it doesn't. We're in zoning Residence A, mobile aid, Protection District Four, rear setback is thirty, front setback is thirty, the current existing home meets all that, the sideline setback is twenty, both sides meet that, so that's on the existing, as well as the lot area of thirty thousand square feet. Mrs. Jamer purchased this in October, believe it or not, of nineteen fifty-one. It's been there, so I think it's sixty-nine years? Matt was right. Still there, would like to stay there, has every intention of staying there as long as she can. So, we have an extra lot, she's looking to subdivide, get approval, not A&R approval, on Lot Two, on the plan, with the plan down the road, that that would be developed. Mr. Glosser has already drawn in, obviously, all the building setback lines, for Lot One, Lot Two. What more do you need, Mr. Carwar?
You want any more airtime?
No, I think that's good enough, thank you.
Okay. Kyle, I know you've been it, and Greg, you did a good explanation, because you're the first one who's ever said to the houses, most of them, we got to look and go like this, so I think John understands that too, so you have the frontage, you have the square feet, you have the setbacks, so you're not creating a non-conforming lot, so Kyle, you don't see any issues with this, do you?
No issues at all.
Okay. No issues, any questions?
So, the existing building is staying put?
Excuse me?
The existing building is staying put?
Stay in, status quo.
Okay, I'll make a motion to endorse a plan of land on 209 Summer Street, showing lots one and two.
Second?
We have the seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, done.
Thank you, Mr. Carwar, ladies and gentlemen, Kate, thank you, John.
Jeff, do you want to do the next A&R?
I don't know if that's going to take a lot of time or not. We'll see how this one goes. Sixteen? Yeah, just a mile off. You're going to wait for this, or you're going to go?
I'll thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, okay. For some of you.
Thank you. Thank you.
With seven oh five Housing Partnership.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Ashley Clark with Community Development. As you know, I've been working with the Walpole Housing Partnership on the Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw articles. And the last time we were here, you gave us two pieces of homework to get done before we came back. One was to get the draft to you two weeks ahead of this meeting, which we've done, so checking off that box. And the second is to have the Housing Partnership vote on the text that was actually before you. And I can report that that is the case, the partnership has seen this draft. And so tonight, the partnership is actually, I think a lot of them are back there in the left corner. They've actually scheduled a meeting for after this meeting, so that they can discuss any kind of things that come up during this, to see if they want to submit any edits before we give the final version to the Board of Selectmen. And so as far as that, that's all I have. Courtney Starling is gonna be presenting the text, and she did a lot of analysis that I think is really helpful in kind of understanding how these are gonna actually work on the ground level. So Courtney, I'll be available if you have any questions, so, so, thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Board, audience viewing public, thank you for having us here tonight. I'm here to talk a little bit about what it is that we've been doing with the Inclusionary Zoning. Briefly, I'll introduce myself. I work for a consulting firm called Community Opportunities Group. I was retained by the town in September to help work with the Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw and also the Affordable Housing Trust article. So we've been doing a lot of work with the article that the Walpole Housing Partnership really kind of started with originating and kind of running that through town council, running it through fiscal models to make sure that projects could pencil and that we weren't going to crush the real estate market, to work with, looking at your existing land use, how much developable land you have remaining, what makes fiscal sense for the community moving forward. So that's basically kind of what we've been doing for the last couple of months, and I sincerely appreciate you giving us the time tonight to talk a little bit about what it is that we've been doing. So, as all of you know, you've had quite a bit of activity going on. The Inclusionary Zoning and the Housing Trust articles were part of the Housing Production Plan. The first one that you did was approved in two thousand thirteen, and the last one that you did, you just updated it in two thousand nineteen. The Housing Trust and the Inclusionary Zoning were part of it, and so this is moving toward implementation, should the town choose to do so. I am gonna try to move fairly quickly, out of respect for everybody, so if you have comments, if you could hold them, we'll do them afterward. But I want to talk a little bit about what's going on in terms of demographics, in terms of your housing market and your labor market. Inclusionary zoning doesn't really come from nowhere, it, you know, this is based in what is happening and kind of how the town can either choose to work with developers to create affordable housing, meet your ten percent, or meet your safe harbor targets, and basically meet your production targets, and be in control of what is being built. So this body who approves projects, and has approved a fair number of them recently, and as well as the ZBA, who's been dealing with a lot of the forty Bs. It's a lot of development at one time, so this is part of kind of seeing how we can explore ways to kind of get the town in a position so that they can pick and choose what housing is being developed moving forward, because there is a scarcity of land. A lot of the community is open space permanently protected. I have a map actually right there that we'll pass around in a little bit, that shows what's going on, where you can build residential development, what's already, what's already built out, and where your open space is. And so, so it is rooted a little bit in what we have going on in terms of land use, what we have going on with your residents, like most communities in Massachusetts, your population of seniors age sixty-five and up is growing. However, your population of families with children has been declining. We've got a five percent decline in school enrollments over the past five years. We'll see how recent development impacts that, but so far we have, we, you know, the trajectory has been somewhat downward. We have a growth in households with disabled members, although there's very little housing in town that is safe and suitable for people with particularly mobility challenges. So there's some real kind of issues that are going to become more acute before they're alleviated, particularly with seniors who need housing that is appropriate. You've got about nine thousand households, the majority are family households, but you also have a fair number of single fam, or single person households. Those are generally senior households, but periodically we do find young adults who live alone as well, if they are fairly high income. Forty-four percent of your households have someone over sixty, so again, we're aging, we, you know, the needs of people's housing is changing. The four-bedroom house with a lot of snow to shovel might not necessarily be the dominant housing choice for some of your, you know, some of your residents, but there also might not be something to downsize them to that they can afford. So we care about that, we're concerned about making sure that the people who live here can actually stay here, particularly, you know, we're looking at life cycle communities where you can be born, raised, and, you know, spend your life in one place, which in these days is getting harder and harder. When we look at the housing supply, we're looking at the bulk of your housing, like many communities around you, is single-family homes. Single-family homes are not necessarily the most affordable. Last year, your median sales price was five hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, so that's the middle of the market, not the top or the bottom. That's, you know, it's, it's a fair number, it's a fair amount of money for people, especially those who are getting started, or those, again, who are looking to downsize. Your condos were selling at three eighty-five last year, I anticipate that that price will probably go up as well. The average rental rate in town is about eighteen hundred dollars, just from what's currently listed. And so that, that fluctuates a little bit with what's listed, but that's about what you have going on right now. Seventeen percent of your local tax levy is derived from commercial property. This is an important number, because the more your base tips towards residential, the more your local taxpayers are kind of footing the bill for your community services, so we always want to watch that number. You've got nine hundred businesses employing twelve thousand workers. The median wage in Walpole pays fifty-six thousand dollars, while your median resident's wage is fifty-two thousand dollars. So your residents are actually making slightly less than what your local jobs are paying, and your local jobs are not necessarily paying enough to support a person to be able to live in Walpole. Here's proving our point. The yellow bars are senior households, again, we want to watch out for them and what it is that they're able to afford. The green horizontal bar is where, what you need to be able to buy a low median-priced house. The income that you need to be able to rent an apartment is the red bar. The green bars are your local jobs and the average wage that they're paying. The bulk of your jobs do not pay enough on one income to be able to live here, or basically anywhere else in the region. This is troubling particularly for businesses who have to deal with employee absenteeism when it snows and other reasons like that, where their workers are not able to get here. The longer they have to travel, the more issues that employers have with that. Also, depending on what your wage, or what your jobs are, and your jobs tip heavily toward manufacturing, and they also tip heavily towards retail, those are, you know, those are people who are not necessarily the highest income workers who have, you know, that's where we start seeing issues. And so the ability to house your workers is going to be important in the future if you want to maintain a diverse population of households, so not just, you know, not just family households, not just senior households, you get young adults, you want the, the whole crew, generally speaking, to ensure maximum fiscal sustainability. Diversity is kind of the spice of life on that one. Looking at Inclusionary Zoning, what we're proposing to do here is fairly common to do a sliding scale. What we have done with this scale is run it through a few different types of models to ensure, again, that we weren't gonna crush the housing market and that these projects would be viable. Your current forty B status, as of your Housing Production Plan, was seven percent. However, the forty, the subsidized housing inventory is an interesting amalgamation of both market rate and affordable units. So of your six hundred and thirty-six SHI units, only two hundred and eighty-nine of them are actually affordable. So, we're talking about three hundred units to go around for every single senior, every single family household, every single young adult household that is, you know, making, you know, eighty, ninety thousand dollars a year. And so that's not, it's not a lot of units to go around, basically. The purpose of Inclusionary Zoning is that it uses the market rate to generate affordable housing units. The average affordable housing unit costs about three hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred thousand dollars. So every time one is not constructed as part of a development, the town is basically shouldering that three hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred thousand dollar price tag per unit for every ten market rate units that are constructed. So the purpose of Inclusionary Zoning is to provide a market-based solution to help towns keep up. It's a choice. And so, but this is a common choice, if any, means that all of these are taken. Locally, we, when you want to look in your own subregion, we've gotten a lot of questions about who else does this. Basically, everybody does some variety of affordable housing within their local bylaws. We are hoping to have both the, the existing age-qualified village bylaw, which has an affordability component, which helps in those situations, and we are hoping to bring to town meeting in two thousand twenty this Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw. This one is set at a minimum project size of six units, so every development with six units or more will be triggered to provide ten to fifteen percent of affordable housing, depending on the project size. It scales up toward, for larger projects, at twenty units, it scales down for smaller projects. Most of my client communities like to, they prefer if we're going to do affordable housing, they like buildings that are generally under sixteen units. So this is kind of how we help get there, to these smaller buildings that have affordable housing that are more in scale than a, you know, three hundred units at a time, a big apartment building. And so this is kind of how we work that into the program. So what we're proposing to do here is, with the Inclusionary Zoning, we have a pro-rata fee for partial unit requirements, so anything that rounds, generally in Inclusionary Zoning, it is common that they're written so that anything that generates a point five or above unit requirement rounds up, and that has to be a whole unit that's provided. There, in some communities, there's also a mechanism that if you round down, that you do a partial unit payment for the partial unit that wasn't constructed. We've included that in Walpole, particularly because right now, there is no way, there's no funding mechanism necessarily for the town to be a player in affordable housing. And so if the town wants to, again, kind of be on the proactive side of this, this is a way to generate it without doing CPA, without doing a appropriation from the general fund on an annual basis. This is another way of doing it. Part of how we've done this to make it feasible financially is to reduce the required lot size for affordable units. It's a modest reduction, it sounds, it looks big when you see seventy-five percent, but we're talking about ten percent of the units, generally speaking, so it's a lot size reduction on basically one unit. Because again, we're shooting for smaller projects that fit in better, that are more in scale with what's happening in Walpole, rather than six-story buildings. Your local vernacular is three stories and under, and so that's what we're shooting for. We've put in options for setbacks and buffer waivers by special permit, but only if they, if the project includes elements of better site design. We'll talk about that a little on the next slide, because there's some, you know, it's, if somebody is asking for a waiver, generally speaking, it is preferable that they give something in exchange. And so what we're really looking for are things here that particularly reduce environmental and fiscal impacts to the town. The, the other thing that we're doing in here is a parking waiver. This is a fairly well-studied area, because parking is very contentious in a number of communities, as to look at what the actual parking utilization rate is in affordable projects and in market rate projects. We've set the affordable, we have put in a reduction for the affordable units only, so again, we're talking about, you know, ten percent of the units, not every single one of them. And we're also talking about where there is, where they are providing some sort of complete streets mechanism to get people in any other vehicle than a car that's driven alone, so that they can get to work or get to the doctor's office or the grocery store, wherever it is that they need to go. So developers that are willing to offer, there's, it's specified, but some of those benefits, there is potential to waive some of the parking as well in that situation. Better site design, there's kind of a list of justifications as to the types of activities that are generally accepted to justify such waivers. Setbacks are generally landscape-based, open space is generally ecologically based, so if there's riparian corridors or existing open space that we want to connect to, endangered species, those sorts of situations, water supply protection, there's a lot of reasons that we want to deal with open space appropriately. For a lot, for a lot coverage, the biggie on this one is low-impact development for stormwater management. The rain is something that we do have to manage, and, as well as snow runoff. And so for those who actually do low-impact development, stormwater techniques, which tend to deal with natural site filtration, as opposed to putting things onto the town to have to deal with, we would definitely be interested in making that a priority. Parking, we already talked about what types of activities would need to be offered as a potential justification for such a waiver. A little more about the lot size waiver, there's a lot of curiosity about what this actually looks like. I'm not gonna go over the table, because you can read it while I'm speaking. Something to be noted is that in the rural district, there's some concern about a reduction in lot sizes in the rural district. The average per acre value right now in the rural district is about six hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. So it's, which is fairly high in assessed value for whatever it's worth. And it's not going to be the most economical area to be able to build, because the purchase price upfront is going to be rather expensive. In addition, there aren't really very many development opportunities in that neck of the woods, and I suspect for any that do exist, the town's priority is more likely going to be conservation, because that's a more appropriate use of that land, generally speaking. But we did look through, I did do a good look at what your, you know, what your existing lots are, where your sewer is located, how much development potential there actually is. And like I said, it is really somewhat limited, most people are looking for the unusual suspects at this point to develop. The only other caveat in this is that the general residence district does allow multifamily uses, which the other districts do not, and that for multifamily projects, that would change how it is calculated. But let's say, I did put in an example, if it were a ten-unit project, the difference from the waiver is going from a hundred and twenty thousand square feet to a hundred and fifteen thousand square feet, which at that size, five thousand square feet, is fairly de minimis to the naked eye. The reason that we did the lot size waiver this way is that we're trying to stick within what is actually the built environment of Walpole. We spent a lot of time looking at what is currently developed as particularly single-family residential, whether or not they're conforming for the district. You have a fairly high degree of nonconformity in all of your residential districts, but most, more so in residence A and B. That having been said, so, you know, when we look at that, we want to look at like what the median lot size is. And so there's, the existing contradictions is what is actually built as the median lot size. For the most part, they're slightly under or just about where the zoning is actually set at men lot size. And so by working toward the median, we are trying to produce development that again, is more complementary to the architectural scale and the built environment of Walpole. This is more of a village, you know, where you do have density, it is more village style than it is, you know, a giant apartment complex, not that you don't have those, but it, you know, most of Walpole where you do have residential development, that's the characteristic, and that's what we're trying to really go for. And so with the lot modification, we are trying to, you know, we are trying to make sure that the projects will be financially feasible, but we're also trying to make sure that they actually fit in, in the town, and that they don't end up overbuilt. We were also asked a little bit about how this works in the mixed-use, in the B, the business and the central business districts. In both of the central business, or in both those types of business districts, residential uses are not allowed on the ground floor or the basement, so we're talking about mixed-use projects only. There's a little bit of a question as to how this would pencil in whether or not Inclusionary Zoning would upset the apple cart, so to speak, in those districts. For fiscal twenty, we're looking at affordable rents right now on a one-bedroom, it's about sixteen thirty-five a month, and a two-bedroom at about eighteen fifty a month. These are the affordable rental rates, just so we're all clear. Then, and so when you do this, and you, basically, I've run it through to look at what your projected incomes would be based on current market rents, based on what the affordable market rents would be, and look at what the difference would be in the operating income of the building, if it did have affordable housing in it versus if it did not. So in the CBD, we get three and a half times the gross commercial, or the gross floor area of the commercial floor. So we're, this is just, you know, kind of a back-of-the-envelope situation, but if we have ten thousand square feet of commercial, we can generate thirty-five thousand square feet of residential. It's a little questionable with the height, because the height, but I think it could be done, potentially. I think the parking might be more, more difficult to provide than the other, than the actual development itself. But if, when we run this scenario and include three-bedroom units, which DHCD is asking for ten percent in projects to have three-bedroom units in, we look at a difference of about nine hundred and forty dollars a month overall in their operating income. When we scale this for a B, a business district, which allows two times the gross commercial floor area, we're looking at a difference of about two hundred and sixty-five dollars a month in operating income. And so, again, this is based on market, you know, current market rents, this is based on apartments that are sized at the minimum square footage. at the minimum square footage that DHCD requires for affordable housing, um, which are somewhat large and, uh, can be waived if the town requests it. Uh, but that's basically the story of how that works, um, how this works in the central business district. We have exempted this from the lot size waiver, because unlike every other district, that ties the number of residential units to the lot size. In the business and the central business districts, the residential density is tied to the amount of gross square, or gross floor area that's commercial. So that's kind of the difference there. Uh, in terms of the housing units that are generated under inclusionary zoning, uh, this is kind of how it works in a nutshell. The town can request up to seventy percent of the units be reserved for local preference. Local preference is, um, there are four different types of categories of people, of households that meet local preference. One is current residents, one is municipal employees, one is employees of local businesses, and one is households with children attending local, um, Walpole schools. So those are the four situations. This is to ensure that the subsidy that the town is providing in terms of land is met with, um, a, a public benefit that primarily benefits Walpole's residents first. So with each time, uh, that we get in, um, we get affordable housing, we submit a request to DHCD to ask for seventy percent local preference. The other thing I want to talk about is who affordable housing actually serves. Inclusionary zoning units are almost always pr, uh, always priced at eighty percent of the area median income, which is for a four-bedroom household, eighty-nine thousand, two-hundred dollars. The area median income this year for the fair-market rental area that Walpole is in is a hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars. So when we're talking about affordable housing, we're talking about households that are making ninety thousand dollars a year, generally speaking. Um, when we talk about where our housing needs are, they're generally closer to the thirty to fifty percent range, and so there is a little bit of, um, you know, again, because especially if we want to house our local seniors, we really want to look for that thirty to fifty percent, so that we get, we can, uh, stay within the affordability limits for folks who are living on fixed incomes. And so, in order to get there, one of the more common ways is that people adopt a housing trust, they find a way to put some money into it, and one good way to increase affordability is to get from eighty percent to those fifty or thirty percent. If you decide you do want to do, uh, senior housing, for example, the housing trust can be a good mechanism to help offset the developer costs of doing that. Um, they are, one of the things that also is of big interest to, with the housing trust, and I know that we're, you know, I know that you guys won't be taking a vote on this, but I just wanted to mention it, since it's part of the housing production plan that was approved by this board. Um, but the, one of the priorities will also be to deal with the existing housing authority properties. Um, this can help, this money can be used to help maintain it, it can be helped, you're used to retrofit units, so that they are handicap accessible. The existing housing authority properties are, um, the ones that are multifamily are all two stories, but they don't have elevators in them, and so we have really kind of a, um, you know, a, an acute need here. And so that is one of the things that, um, would, you know, has been deemed a priority. Uh, gap financing is sometime offered, particularly because housing trusts don't tend to have very much money. Usually, they have less than a million dollars, and so if you're going to make any kind of investment as a housing trust, you need that money to go in as many directions at one time, and so generally speaking, we're trying to get at least, you know, we're not trying to get individual units when you're providing gap financing, it's because maybe you want to build a group home, and you want to get ten beds that'll count on the SHI, and two-hundred thousand dollars will be what gets the nonprofit there. That's a frequent type of investment. Um, the other thing is to, um, when somebody comes in, they propose a number of units, you know, they're going to meet the minimum of affordable housing, they say, "But hey, you know, we'll do two more for you, um, if you give us, you know, fifty thousand dollars," or that kind of investment, and that's another time that a housing trust can be very useful to up the affordability and development that's already going to be built. Um, that's as much as I'm going to plug the housing trust tonight, though, and so from there, I just want to go on to any questions, comments? I want to pass around also the math, I'm sorry, it's not in more digestible format, but it's, uh, it's, the purpose of being able to see what is actually going on. All of the gray is what you can't build, all of the green is what we probably shouldn't build on, and the yellow and the pink is kind of where your opportunity areas are. And so when you really look at it, it's not that much of Walpole in the end.
When you say probably shouldn't, what do you mean?
Probably, I would, so for the areas that are open in the green, that's your rural residential area. Most of these are attached to existing conservation lands, and so, um, in their rear lot development, so they don't have frontage. Most of the time, when those become, if they become available, the town tries to get a present, or a conservation restriction on it to maintain it as open space. Um, typically, especially when it's around your water supply areas or, um, other things like that, it's, um, it becomes a different priority than to use it for housing. And so my, I'm just not going to recommend that you put housing everywhere.
You look like you're going to say something.
I was, but I don't know if I should say it. So just because you don't recommend it doesn't mean when you're gone, the zoning board won't approve it.
No, no, but as a nerve, you know, as a planner who is looking at this from kind of a comprehensive point of view about what makes sense from an ecological point of view, what makes sense from a fiscal point of view, what makes sense for economic reasons, what makes sense for housing reasons, you know, you're looking at what your current local needs are, and even trying to meet those, much less future, future local needs. It becomes, you know, it becomes a little bit of a chessboard to move the pieces around, because you may need more parks. I haven't done any assessment on your school buildings and whether or not you're going to need new school, you know. I don't know all of your future fiscal needs, and, but I do know that efficiency in land use is something that is, you know, particularly where you have sewer and where you have these little opportunity areas, that's what I'm, that's what I generally recommend people go for.
Well, sir?
Yes?
All right. Now, Johnson, you had it the first one, do you have any questions, comments?
Kind of overwhelming.
It is kind of overwhelming, and I'm sorry to have pitched all of you, all of that at you at one time. It's been a lot of work that the Housing Partnership has been doing over the last couple of years to come and drop it at one time.
Um. I like some of the adjustments that have been made from the previous, oh yeah, that's me. Has the procedure spelled out much more clearly? Is a better idea as to what is and what is not allowed? I like the idea of the, um, fractional credits that was mentioned, one of the changes you made. Still not crazy about the idea of them being able to make cash payments rather than actually creating affordable legal where the guy that's designed to allow.
We generally don't suggest taking in lieu of payments for whole units, but there are times periodically that it might be advisable. Let's say, for example, the town has another housing need that they need to fulfill, let's say, a housing authority building needs a new roof. And let's say that you have a developer coming through, and they want to build a project, and they offer you, instead of a unit, they offer you a cash payment. That one time, it might make sense to take it if, if it achieves the end of getting a new roof that supports sixty-five units at one time. And again, that's what we're, we're really looking at how we can maximize individual investments, where it's just like, one investment can't serve one unit, one investment has to serve twenty to fifty units, you know? That's, that's what we're really talking about. So the housing authority investments are very good for stabilizing existing housing, it's not new construction, but it makes your new house, or your existing, uh, units more functional for the people who are living here.
The, reduce lot sizes, is that, uh, criteria, the seventy-five percent and the fifty percent? What is the, uh, source of that?
The, the source of that was when I went through and analyzed what was going on with your existing, uh, residential, uh, construction, so what's been built since the start of Walpole, and looking at what the current sizes are, what the type of housing is, um, so whether it's, uh, residential, single-family, whether it's duplex, that sort of thing, and coming out to, um, I measured for both the mean and the median on the lot sizes, we go with median to get rid of the skew for really small lots and really big lots. And what I was trying to do was come up with something that adjusts the final minimum lot size in a way that doesn't look that different from what's currently there, but makes the development slightly more feasible for the developer.
That explanation makes a lot, without that explanation, it's very unclear, but it's helpful.
I tried to tie it, uh, we really worked hard to tie it to something that keeps things in scale with what you already have, so that it's not radically different. Um, I generally work in towns where they're, um, they love their towns, they love how they look, they want them to stay like that, and so what we tend to do is work with, uh, towns to create those types of projects where, you know, where they need to exist, so that you can meet your housing production targets and choose your projects after that.
Guess that's it for the moment.
Okay. Okay.
So you, I do, I was very happy to see the seventy percent local preference.
Yeah, that's state law.
So, it's guaranteed?
It's not guaranteed, but generally, I've never had DHCD reject it. So with each project, we put in the letter, um, fifty, fifty percent's basically guaranteed, but seventy percent, we can generally pull off because of the local needs. In Walpole, um, especially after reviewing your housing production plan, I don't anticipate any issues with that based on the level of local need that you currently have. You are not meeting your current local needs, which makes it appropriate to serve, you know, you.
So just to go back, you said you put fifty percent in the letter, is that what you said?
Pardon, fifty?
I'm, I.
Oh, so seventy percent is what we request every single time.
Okay.
And I have never had it rejected. And so that, like I said, we work with your existing housing production plan, which has already done the data analysis on where your needs are. Um, it's accepted by the town, and so those are the numbers we put forward.
So you said you have made an effort to have it blended, and that's what I thought our goal was, and I think it's what housing production's goal was, but when I read this, I didn't feel that way. Um, I'm in favor of affordable housing, I also feel it shouldn't change the community as a whole. I felt like there's no limit anywhere, so somehow, somewhere, it's almost like there should be a percentage we don't exceed. And what I mean by that is if, you know, the state mandates we have to meet a certain level, I don't think anyone, the majority of people who have worked hard to buy their homes in the town and moved here because of what they like about the community, I don't think anyone's looking to have the percentage go crazy and exceed things, and I think that somewhere in here, there should be something that stops it somewhere.
I think that the entire point of this is so that, again, it puts the town back in a position where, A, you are above ten percent or in safe harbor, so that you are able to deny projects, first of all. That I think is actually one of the more important components of this, is just to get the ability to have local control back. And so getting there, though, does mean meeting your production targets, and so, the natural limitation on it, what we build under your conventional zoning is, because of what the lot sizes are set at, the density is never going to be like what you see with a forty-B in a community where you, where you can't deny it, like an unfriendly process. These three-hundred-unit projects aren't something that you can build under your local zoning, because it simply is not, there's not enough density loaded into this to be able to do that. And where you are seeing those projects also are generally in districts that aren't zoned for residential uses. And so we're sticking with what is happening in your existing zoning, we're not looking to necessarily modify it a huge amount, we're just looking for you to be able to keep pace with market rate development, so that in the future, you're not, and, you're not in a position where you're getting more housing units than you expected all at one time.
But am I correct in saying there's nothing there to limit it?
I would say that the limitation itself is actually meeting your housing production target, so that you don't get the large projects that are unfriendly, that, that, what we're looking at here are smaller projects that are thirty units or less, where you're looking in forty-B is three-hundred or more generally, so it's a big difference, what stops the, but stops the big housing develop.
Right?
Well, no, that's how the law works, is that once you hit your ten percent, you can deny projects that you, that don't meet your community needs, and so.
So they can just stop using this?
Well, no, you'll still do inclusionary zoning, but these are pro, these are projects that are permitted under your local zoning, whereas forty-B is permitted outside of your zoning.
No, I understand that.
And so what we're trying to do, in your local zoning, there is not, and I actually have another version of this table that shows what the minimum, uh, lot area would be to hit the fifty-unit project threshold, it's generally over fifty, it's, it's a, um, I just hit that, that's distracting. It's, um, generally speaking, we're talking very large parcels that don't even exist in Walpole. And so, in terms of whether or not inclusionary zoning, we're talking about taking your existing zoning and adding maybe a unit or two to a project in additional density, we're not talking about anything that you can't already do.
I think, Katie, if we, if we, as a town, were to get to a point, and we're like, okay, we're set, we're good, nobody else needs affordable housing, we got it under control, then we could go to town meeting and, you know, delete this section, essentially. We could make a decision as a town, you know, when and if we think we don't need it anymore.
I would simply say that because you have, I mean, because of the subdivision control bylaw, there is an amount of development that can occur in Walpole that just currently exists. This is, we're working with what you already have, we're not adding something new to it that changes things, or.
But I think we're changing things by allowing the lot sizes to change so drastically, like when I saw the, the up to fifty percent.
On the affordable unit, so again, we're talking one unit out of ten.
You need to look at the right.
Yes, so, so it's only, it's only a very few units per development.
It is a change.
It's a big change, though. I mean, so, the minimums, it says, "The exception to those housing units permitted under Section 10C, age-qualified villages, affordable housing unit shall be required only twenty-five percent of the minimum lot size per unit of the underlying base zoning district on sites served by public sewer. For sites not served by public sewer, the minimum lot size requirement per affordable housing unit may be reduced by up to fifty percent of that required by the base zoning district."
Yes, um, one unit out of every ten, generally speaking. And then have that, and have that averaged out among all of the units, so that we don't end up with, you know, nine thirty-thousand-square-foot lots and one seventy-five-hundred-square-foot lot. That's why there's a mechanism in here to, uh, make sure that the lots are all equitably sized. And so we are looking for a deviation that is, and the deviation does change based on the project size. The bigger the project is, generally, the, uh, less impact it has on the overall, uh, lot size. But again, we really are working to tie it to the existing land and.
And you also, though, mentioned that you had taken what the average lot size is in the, today in the actual zoning, because we have so many exceptions.
We're not cruising in.
You're actually making the average lot size will be actually in keeping with what the average is now.
Generally speaking, yes.
I'm, I'm going to, everybody jump in, so I'm going to jump in. The reason we have such a small one is Bird was built in seventeen ninety, all the houses were small. People wanted fifteen, that's why we ended up with fifteen thousand, so you can't compare that ten, that comes back from a hundred years ago.
Yes, it does.
So we've had zoning, as you know, we've had zoning, everybody in the state is up there zoning since that, they didn't want these little lots. So just to say that, that's the reason it's there.
Yes, I understand.
It has nothing to do with, this is what we wanted, it's history.
Yes.
So, Section 6C mentions shuttle service to and from the MBTA, what kind of project scale are we envisioning that we need shuttle service to and from the MBTA?
That would really depend, for some of your pending fortyBs, that would probably be a negotiating point for, that's a fairly large project, and not one that I necessarily, I think, would be built here, but generally speaking, it is, um, if you are going to have a project that can financially support it, that would be a fairly large project, and so if somebody were going to, we're not saying you have to do it, we're saying if you do do it, we might consider waiving some of your parking, and so that's really at the, uh, that's at the, um, choice of the applicant, but should you guys think that that would be something, or should the ZBA think that that would be something, um, that would be beneficial to local traffic patterns, that might be a good thing to ask for. We're, we're trying to get things on the table that you can ask for and negotiate for to improve the project quality that you're getting, we're not really trying to reinvent the wheel here.
Um, seven sec, Section seven mentions placing a value on the land, it doesn't specify how. I had voiced before, I thought this was important for consistency, that we should blatantly say, you know, three appraisals paid for by the applicant, determined by the board, maybe? For example, when we do a peer review, that's how it works, we'll pay, we'll pick?
Yeah, right now, it's set to go to the town clerk, or not the town clerk, the assessor, uh, to make sure that they agree with the assessed valuation that comes through, I don't see any reason why we can't add language that we want three independent appraisals.
I just think for consistency, because boards change.
Yeah, three independent appraisals.
And you could have a board this week that does it one way, and a board next week who does it another way, so I think, to be fair, it should be consistent.
Okey-dokey.
Um, and then in Section seven, in some of the points, it listed in its discretion, but not in all of them, and I don't know if possibly it should be in the heading, so it applies to all. Um, and in seven- And in seven D, it says, but it is strongly discouraged.
Yes.
If it's at the discretion of the, if it's at the discretion of the ZBA, I don't think you need to say it's strongly discouraged. If it's bad, we shouldn't have it in there.
It was requested that we leave in language saying, I actually recommend it against taking in lieu of fees altogether, but because there's no funding mechanism for affordable housing in Walpole, and because, again, there might be that one-off situation where you'd rather take a cash payment for a full unit and put a roof on something else, we've left it in there to leave a flag to our future board members that we don't necessarily want to do it, but we want to leave enough flexibility in there just in case it ever makes sense. It usually doesn't, I will say that, though, it usually doesn't, but one time it might.
I hate to say it, because I know a lot of people put a lot of time into this, but this version made me uneasy. I don't know, I read it, and I read the, the changes, and I just feel like we need a stop somewhere. I think people are here because they like what we have. They came here, you know, not everyone's lived here forever, a lot, most of the community has moved here. And I feel like they came here because they like what we have. I've heard from so many people, their concern about the changes that are going on in town. And I think that they are very nervous about future changes. And I think as a result, we have to keep that in mind, we have to go forward carefully, and we have to make sure things don't get misconstrued. I know it's not your intent.
No.
For it to keep going, I know it's not, the partnership's intent.
I am very cognizant of the collective anxiety of not just the residents of Walpole, but many of the residents in eastern Massachusetts who are facing a significant amount of development in their time and are in their towns in a very short timeframe. A lot of that, again, is, is forty B, a lot of it is bypassing local zoning, and a lot of it is coming through in that mechanism. And so your best shot at being able to avoid the unintended projects that you didn't plan for is to get ahead of forty B and get your SHI situated. So that, it's, it, you know, I'm not gonna tell you guys that you need to adopt inclusionary zoning and that, I don't take, I don't pay taxes here. You know, I'd be pretty honest about that. But I am here to tell you, you know, there, this is a series of choices that the town needs to make for its future as to what it's going to look like. And generally speaking, when we're dealing with a lot of anxiety of the residents who are dealing with a lot of change at the same time, the biggest, the biggest response is typically, first, let's get underhand the things that don't come under our regulations, and then, and that's the biggest issue. And so you have to do that first before you can move on to the other things. And so this isn't a bylaw that invites everybody to build new units in Walpole. This is a bylaw that says if you're going to do it, please help the town out so that we can get ahead of this.
I'll say.
Phil? First of all, just to say, I am a member of the Housing Partnership, so I was involved in the, the whole review of this and input. I just want to say a couple of things, though, that, that first, I, I think that Walpole does need affordable housing. And I think that one thing this does do is it allows us to have affordable housing spread out through the town that meets the different needs of people, because we do want to, you know, make sure the people who live here now can remain to living here as circumstances change. And just looking at the numbers, what we're talking about as being affordable is not really that affordable. And so we, we all may know someone, actually, who might not be able to stay here, or who's trying to move to Walpole. And then, second, I think getting control over our forty Bs, this is a very effective way to do that. At the same time, you know, do, it does also provide for that, that extra housing. And I think, as you said, you know, it's not, there's not like so much buildable land that we're gonna get in influx of all these projects. But it, but it, what, it does make sure that as we do get projects, that, first of all, we do get some affordable housing out of it so that someone is doing something for the town, and second, we're adding to our subsidized housing inventory and get ahead of the forty Bs. So, you know, I'm glad that the Planning Board is having a chance to review this. And I, you know, I hope everyone has, you know, after you get your questions, I hope everybody, you know, has an opportunity to give a, hopefully, a positive view on this. Thank you. Sarah?
Okay. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, guys.
Very informative. I agree, we need affordable housing. I think there are people in this area, Walpole and surrounding areas, that need affordable housing. So, so really, my concern is that the way we implement it is the correct way that we've written, you know, a bylaw that's clear and concise, that it's not conflicting with other sections, and that it's going to, you know, serve the town for, you know, the foreseeable future. So that's my main concern. So I do have a couple, you know, questions about the bylaw. So one, my first question is really, what is the intent with regard to the age-qualified village? Is, is the intent to keep, so we have a section in the bylaw with age-qualified village. We've added affordable requirements. Is the intent to keep this section completely separate?
Yes. There, there is an exemption from the applicability section to age-qualified villages. The affordable, or the affordability levels in the AQV bylaw that was just passed are slightly different from the affordability in the inclusionary zoning, particularly because it is senior housing and the affordable housing needs in the senior demographic are different than gen, you know, than the general market. We decided that it was, in the, it was best to let the age-qualified villages stand on their own two feet and to have this section be separate from it.
Okay. I would agree with that. However, there is a section, when you talk about parking, where you refer to age-qualified village and going before the ZBA?
That does not refer to age-qualified village in the AQV sense, it refers to age-restricted housing, which may not be, it's, it may be developed under a different bylaw than the AQV. And so typically, for affordable senior housing units, let's say it's a Lytec project, we've got, and we'll call it an American Legion's gonna redevelop, and we're gonna do forty units there, or something like that. We want to, I totally just lost my train of thought.
So you, you want to be able to restrict, or?
Oh, the parking, yes. Because affordable, because senior housing generates a lower parking utilization rate than any other type of housing, we do want to be, we do put a more, a higher exemption in there because of the actual utilization rates are being lower. However, if somebody does want a parking waiver, they do need to justify that with a transportation demand management plan. You know, you, you need to justify a waiver, you can't just say, hey, we don't need that parking, you need to demonstrate that. However, throughout Massachusetts, it has demonstrated time and again that senior housing in particular does not use as much parking.
Okay.
Ditto that for affordable as well.
Okay, all right, that's good. So if the intent is to have the age-qualified village completely separate, I guess I just have a question, why it was not spelled out in the applicability, and why is it instead under the special provisions?
Because, again, we're talking about age-qualified villages, which are projects permitted under one type of the bylaw, and then we're talking about senior housing that might just be age-restricted housing, that isn't permitted under AQV.
But under the special provision, it says, with the exception of those housing units permitted under Section ten C, which is age-qualified villages.
Yes.
So if that's the only, if that's the only cutout.
I misunderstood your question, Ashley just explained it to me. My bad, sorry. That's a, we need to adjust that language, we just edited that on the fourteenth, so that was, that's a scribbler's error.
Okay, all right. I mean, because it says unless otherwise exempted, I just feel to make it clear, if that's the only exemption, just say it.
I misunderstood the question, that's, that's a scribbler's error at this point, it was taken out on.
Okay.
We've had a lot of drafts floating around between us and Town Council and various parties, and so some, with track changes, sometimes things disappear.
Okay. And then still on the parking section, a couple of questions, so about the note at the bottom of the parking schedule saying that a special permit shall be required for parking provided in excess of two point five parking spaces per unit?
That would be generally considered overbuilding of parking, which makes the town then, particularly near Central Business District, responsible for the stormwater management, so more paved area costs you more money. So we're trying to control some of the fiscal impacts that are secondary.
So this, this statement applies to every project in the town of Walpole?
Only if it is going to be one that has inclusionary. So if you want to build some single-family homes with fourteen parking spaces, get down with your bad self, as long as you're not exceeding lot coverage. But if you're going to do a project with more than six units, and you want more than that, there may be a time to talk about it.
Okay. Just as a point of reference, so we, we have before us an age-qualified village, a hundred unit age-qualified village.
Yeah.
And on, on that project is three hundred and ninety-one parking spaces. So that's three point nine one.
Mm-hmm, and I'm not going to comment on another person's development and whether or not that is what we should be doing. And I'll leave that to the wisdom of, of the board permitting that, but I would say that that is a rather high parking count. Typically, typically what we see is, in the suburbs, is a parking utilization rate in market rate housing of about one point seven spaces per unit, somewhere in there. Affordable housing, we see it slightly below point five. Age-qualified, we see some, like, usually like point two, it tends to be pretty low. But it also depends on what the program is, whether we're dealing with single families, townhouses, what the garage situation is, whether we're fifty-five or sixty-five, if we've got working people or not, there's a lot of factors.
Some of that is in garage, actually, but yeah.
And so, and some of, you know, sometimes you want visitor parking space, particularly if they're building a clubhouse and they're gonna have some shindigs there, we might see some extra parking, and so, or if there's a commercial use, there's a lot of variations.
Okay. Okay, and then similarly, the, the reduction for like a parking plan that would apply only to whatever project would be.
You gotta be within, do we set the radius at two miles?
Right.
I think we set it either at a mile or two miles for the radius, that, that's only eligible if you're near transit.
Yeah, and that twenty percent is of the whole project, or only the affordable units?
That's twenty percent of the whole project, up to. Generally speaking, I don't think you'll see somebody go for that because, quite frankly, developers tend to make sure that they have enough parking to serve their development, because otherwise it impacts its saleability or rentability.
Okay. Okay. And then you, you kind of touched on this, but just as a, like a, a point of education. So outside of single, single-family homes, six-plus units are currently only allowed in the GR, the Central Business, and the Business District.
Yes.
So I just want to just kind of underscore that we're not allowing, you know, all these crazy developments in places, you know, multi-family units in places where it's not already allowed now.
Particularly, not particularly any more so than you can already build. Where this is really modest in terms of what the density bonuses are, so that we're able, again, we're, we're, you know, we're walking the line on what we can reasonably ask for and what can actually get financed.
Right. I mean, you, you mentioned it, that, you know, in those cases where we, we've seen kind of those large developments, it's come via forty B. So this is an attempt to, you know, steer projects in places that we want it, and we're not giving, you know, developers the ability to build multi-family units where they don't already have.
I mean, mostly, we just want to encourage developers to build under your local zoning bylaws instead of forty B.
Right.
It's, you know, kind, you like what you got, so we're got, you know, this is working with what you got to get something closer to what you want, generally speaking. There might be different use that have different opinions here, but.
Yeah, okay. And then on, so on calculating the minimum lot size, and, and you had kind of went over this a little bit with Katie, but I just did a, you know, a calculation, say we have a ten-unit multi-family in the GR. So that's one, one affordable unit.
Mm-hmm.
So.
That's actually calculated in the text right there.
Yeah.
So, says, so the lottery requirement in the general residential requires thirty thousand square feet, this is the existing zoning, thirty thousand.
But I think that's single family.
No, that's the multi-family, so it's thirty thousand for the first unit, and then ten thousand per additional unit for multi-family. So to get to a three-family, for example, you need to have at least a sixty thousand square foot lot.
No, you need thirty thousand. It's ten thousand.
So in the zoning bylaw, when it says.
It's ten thousand per unit.
Yeah, ten thousand per unit, about the first thousand, thirty, right?
No.
You don't charge the first thirty?
So if, if you have.
Oh, that's unusual, I apologize, that's an unusual interpretation.
If you have three units, you can do it in thirty, in thirty thousand.
Okay, I had interpreted G to mean that you have to provide at le, or the, not G, but it's earlier on. I had interpreted that as C, I had interpreted to say that it had at least thirty thousand feet, and that was the base, because it's typically one unit, and then you go from there. That's interesting.
So just, just to, just to kind of, you know, go off of what, what Katie had asked, so, so the ten-unit development, so you'd have one affordable, and with the reduction, say it's on the, the public sewer. So that one unit is reduced by seventy-five thousand, which brings it down to twenty-five hundred. And your other nine units, that's ninety thousand, so ninety-two thousand five hundred. So your minimum lot size per unit is nine thousand two hundred and fifty, as opposed to ten thousand.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to illustrate, you know, kind of what you, what you've already said, that it's, it's not a big, huge difference.
We're trying for it not to be, yeah.
Right.
So I apologize for the error on this interpretation of your bylaws, but it, you know, again, especially because, I mean, for whatever, it's worth ten units, is a good, that's a good project. You know, in your Central Business District, where, you know, you have an existing typology that's about three stories, three and a half in some cases, that this could be, you know, that could be an attractive project for the town. You get maybe two commercial units out of it. You know, you get a couple of jobs, you get some commercial taxes, you get a couple of residential units, it might not be the worst thing. You have a fair amount of parking, you know, downtown, it could be an attractive thing.
Right. So just a, a request on that area, if you could say the following formulas, instead of formula, because it's actually two separate formulas, and maybe like a step one, step two?
Perfect.
And then the, the final calculation is not really a minimum lot size, it's a minimum lot size per unit.
Yes.
So if you could just add that per unit?
Yep.
That you mentioned. And then if you could, for me, can you go over like a sample calc for the, the payment in lieu of, particularly for like a rental unit, how is that determined?
So the rental unit is still based on the, what is, would be the assessed value of the, it's gonna be the, it's gonna be the value of the unit, whether it's rental or ownership. So we put in a mechanism that allows for an appraisal, but it's a minimum of four hundred and fifty thousand per unit. There's, there's two mechanisms in there. One is that, generally speaking, I'm assuming that the assessed value is going to come in slightly under four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But again, because we're using, this is pro rata, so we're only getting a portion of that, we want to make sure that it's set at a point that is not, again, isn't going to be the difference between whether or not a project can pencil, but is going to give the town a little bit of money so that you can invest in yourselves.
So approximately, like.
So, I mean, the most basic is, let's say, you know, if somebody has a unit requirement of three point two units, it's gonna be, you know, two of the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
In the most basic calculation. If there are appraisals brought into it and it ends up being higher, we do want something that, because zoning is a two-thirds vote, we want to leave the number at a point that is going to be resilient for a few years so that you don't need to adjust that. But we also want to make sure that there's a rising tide mechanism in it, too, with the appraisals.
Okay, okay. And then just a few other things. Okay, okay, okay.
Been an hour.
Okay, just, just two, just two things. Under the administration, it suggests that the Housing Partnership shall, shall talk to them about bedroom distribution? Did you look at putting more teeth into that, and really putting that upfront into?
It's really at the discretion of the town. I've heard on both sides, on the one hand, nobody likes the idea of sending a developer to another group of people to talk to. On the other hand, affordable housing is fairly complicated, and so you want to make sure that the units being offered meet minimum standards, they're gonna meet DHCD standards, for example, they're going to meet the town's objectives for local needs. That's where, you know, some, in terms of where the units are located, in terms of the composition, in terms of tenure, that's the time that you really talk about it, and so we would like to make sure that the town's local leadership on housing issues are paying attention to the units that are being offered under inclusionary zoning.
Yeah, it's just, my concern is that they'll all be like one-bedroom units.
You can't do that, no, actually, the HCD won't let you do that. At this point, and developers aren't, they, developers want a mix, because if you do all one-bedrooms, it really kind of limits your market. And so usually what we see is. And so usually what we see is a mix of ones and twos.
For the affordable, I'm saying only.
Oh, the afford, no, there's a mechanism there that you can't, you can't just give only one bedrooms. DHCD has requirements about that too. You have to pepper it out. And so when we have the slide, this slide, for example, that's why when you look at the unit counts for the one-bedroom, two-bedrooms, and three-bedrooms, it includes a peppering of affordable units so that they're at different rates. It would be kind of disingenuous if I said, oh, they're only one bedrooms. They're not.
So that's from the state, so we don't need to require it?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. All right, and the last thing is just preference, the definitions in section two, I think those should be added only to section 14 of our bylaw, not in that section. If you're adding new definitions, just add that to the.
I generally agree with that. Unfortunately, because I didn't inherit this bylaw, you know, as a rough situation, in case there are any conflicts, it's better to keep the, the town council would recommend that you keep your definitions within this section so that they're, we don't have anything, the one thing that we did have a minor just stylistic issue with was the difference between a housing unit and a dwelling unit, which we've accommodated in the definition of affordable housing unit, to refer to it as a dwelling unit, which is the definition commonly used in the rest of the bylaw. But other than that, this is, generally speaking, it's cleaner to do it this way.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I wish we had this ahead of time, would have made life a lot quicker for us, your whole presentation. We've been here a little more than an hour and a lot of work to be done here.
I appreciate your time.
Yeah, well, those people here, they're not too happy either. I got a few quick questions and I'm going to bang them out. Does this apply to contiguous or in total for development?
I don't understand your question.
Very simply, is if I'm going to build 10 houses all through Walpole, do I got to build one of those affordable or does it all own land that's contiguous?
Are you saying single?
Yeah.
This would apply to a single-family development.
No, but you missed my point.
I'm not sure I understand your words.
Very simple. We kick off at six units, correct?
Yes.
So if I'm building seven houses all over town, do I get hit by that?
No.
So it's, it has to be contiguous.
One development, yeah. One parent parcel, one parent parcel to start with, one individual development. If somebody is building individual house lots here and there and there, no, they don't trigger inclusionary.
The other thing is, do you have to put the affordable in that development or can you put it somewhere else?
Generally, we prefer it, but off-siteing is allowed under this bylaw.
It is allowed, okay.
Yes.
Next question, is it more the technical, we already have a special permit for multi-family, which this would fall under. Have you guys figured out how that's going to mesh?
They work together in concert. This doesn't change a special permit requirement for multi-family housing, this is in addition to.
In addition to, but it's all been checked out that there's, one's not going to trump the other?
Yes. No.
There's no.
There's a severability clause in here and an applicability clause that addresses that issue.
Okay, income, be affordable, is it based upon your income or is it based upon your net worth?
It's based, that's actually, it depends on what the tenure is. Ownership housing is, there's a factor in there for your net worth. Rental housing, because with ownership, you can't have assets in excess of $275,000. And so that's the limitation there. In rental, it is just, it is income-based, but there are also additional qualifications. And in ownership, you also have to be able to qualify for a mortgage. You can't be cost burden and spending more than 30% of your income on this housing unit, so on and so forth.
So in rental, there is no net worth factor in it?
It comes in as imputed income, it's a fairly technical formula, but it, there's a factor, but it doesn't usually, we're not usually dealing with people who have that kind of income and can qualify.
And next thing, to make anything affordable, you'll agree that what you push out in money makes something more affordable, less affordable, correct? The more you push out, the less affordable it is?
I'm not sure what you're referring to being pushed out.
Money, when you write a check every month, the more you write, the less affordable your house becomes, do you agree?
Yes, well, I mean, depending on what your income is, but generally speaking, yeah, the higher your housing costs, the more.
Correct. Now, is the Housing Partnership looked at the tax rate? Because that's one of the biggest things that's pushing people out. And the fact that this town has gone up an average of 7% for the last four years. And that's why we don't have overrides anymore because we're flush with cash. Have they said anything to the assessors? This is a way to make something affordable without necessarily going through this whole process?
Well, there is market rate, you know, there is properties that are naturally more affordable, that don't carry deed restrictions, that might not have the assessed value as a new property would. It's not really.
I think you'll find that all of them are up there, but my point is, everything keeps getting pushed up and up and up in assessment. If that gets pushed, the Housing Partnership, they kept, that would be one of the things that I would think is another avenue to keep things affordable.
Okay.
Property taxes is one way if you keep them where they should be. Now, my last one is a sunset clause. What you said is to keep it in. Why wouldn't you do a clause that when you reach the threshold that we have to be, it reverts back until it has to come out again?
Because the threshold moves every 10 years with the decennial census and so you can repeal this, but that doesn't mean that your 40B target is stationary. You meet it every decade, that's, every decade you're chasing a new production target and that's based on the market rate.
Basically, we're going to probably, we're going to meet it when South Walpole kicks in, so therefore this will just continue us on forever. Beyond what the state has already mandated.
I mean, again, this is, again, this is about building affordable housing under your local bylaws, this is, you know, are your housing needs capped at 10% of your housing? No, in terms of what your local needs are, you actually have affordability needs that are well in excess of 10% of your housing units. I wouldn't recommend stopping, but you can.
You're talking around it, is this, you've presented this and the Housing Partnership is a way to control our 40B.
Yeah.
But now you're saying, well, you need more. What is it, is it a deal or?
I'm saying that for as long as people are building housing in Walpole, you are asking the developers to provide something in return to you. That's the, we're not telling people to build, we're just saying if you're going to do it, you know, please be respectful of the town and also help us out in the process.
So my point is, we, if we hit the 10%, this will go on forever and we'll be hitting 15?
Probably not.
Why? If this, if this is.
Because we're talking about 10% of your market rate units. In the end, we're just talking about keeping your 40B, we're talking about making sure that the housing that is built under your local bylaws is staying commensurate with the market rate development for your next decade, you know, your next decennial target. This is just about keeping pace. This isn't about building more housing. This is about making sure that when you do have housing built, that it's not setting you further back.
Also, Mr. Chairman, so if our current number is seven, that doesn't include any of the 500 market rate units that have recently been.
But it's been.
So that's what the target by 50 units, yeah.
No, but it's already been said and I might as well say it, is with the 300 units coming down South Walpole, we'll put us over the top. And this is what I understood, is this, so we have control as opposed to the 40B. My point is, we reach our threshold, this continues on forever. That's all.
Unless you repeal, yeah.
Until town meeting changes it.
I mean, for whatever it's worth, and, you know, I know that everybody's concerned about growth, the, what people generally do when they're having a lot of growth is also, you know, they start considering growth moratoriums and freezing, and doing development freezes. And so for whatever it's worth, we're just working with your existing zoning, if you have an issue to the point that you cannot meet your, meet the demand of what is happening, that's something, you know, that's another planning mechanism to consider down the line. It's common, people adopt growth moratoriums for a year, two years, it depends, you know.
Well, you can adopt that, I've been through it. You can't do a moratorium unless you have a specific reason, it has to be very good, like Stoughton when they didn't have the water. You have to have specific, you can't say, we don't want it because we don't want any more.
I recognize it.
You just can't apply a moratorium. So that's not a solution to what you're saying.
Well, I am saying that you've permitted in the last year several hundred units, which is fairly commonly accepted as a lot of growth at one time for a municipality to absorb. And so I wouldn't necessarily rule out whether or not, you know, whether or not your chips are cashed.
But I'm saying from state statute, what we did before back in the late 90s, tried to do it, can't do it, you have to have a specific reason.
I know that.
Like you don't have water. You can't just say, we don't want any more because we got too many. And why do we have too many? Because we allowed too many. The state's going to say, you created your own problem. It's not a physical problem with water or something to that effect. We created the problem.
Do you guarantee that you're not going to have that problem though?
Guarantee what problem?
That you're not going to have water capacity issues in the future, sewer capacity issues. It may come, it may come up, you have a lot of development and.
Now, we're going around like this. Basically, what we're going to do is if we hit the 10%, this just continues on forever, correct? That's my point.
And so will the 10% requirement.
Yeah, I understand, but once we hit it and we're not building anything, the only thing we can build based upon this will be units that fall under this, pretty much.
As long as the development is over six units.
Yeah, I understand that, but the chances of building one or two here isn't going to be a pimple on the elephant there because you're going to probably exceed it anyway. My point is, everybody's going to stand, going forward, this stays forever. And the whole purpose of this has been is so that we control our destiny. Well, our destiny has been set by the state at 10%. But now we're going above and, now we go above and beyond it, we don't get a gold star for that, that's my point.
You also may though be working ahead towards the next decennial increase. It's not, like I said, because the target moves every 10 years, this is, you know, this is about keeping pace. That's all it is.
What target moves every 10 years?
The 10% target is based on the number of year-round housing units as determined by the most recent decennial census.
It's been 10 forever, right?
So, yeah, the 10% doesn't change, but the number of housing units that you multiply by 10% changes every 10 years. And so every 10 market rates.
I understand, but based upon this is you're only going to put up one here, one here, and if you do one, we're going to be exceeded every time. That's all.
Yeah, but I mean, let's say, let's say one of the 40Bs doesn't get built and you don't meet 10%. There's a lot that happens between the point that somebody applies and the point that it happens. And so this is preparing for resiliency in case what you think will happen doesn't. That's all.
Understood, okay, thank you.
Are we doing any vote?
Yeah, I'm also.
There's nothing to vote on.
Okay.
And what are we going to vote? This is a presentation.
Okay.
There was.
With respect to your little record, any questions from the audience?
Yeah, I'll make a quick cliff to do the time, sure.
And yes, I am getting old and a little slower, but thank you very much and Happy New Year to the board and to the audience. What we have, I'll bet you that we don't have 100 people in this town that has a clue about any of this. That's number one. And number two, when you see things that are intelligently debated between the experts and the boards and individual citizenry, you realize full well that within the 100 that may think they have an idea of what this is all about, they don't. The other aspect is, you're talking about the 40B. I believe we're presently at 7.1%. And if all of the units are approved, you would be at about 11.4. With respect, if you said to a developer looking to put X number of units that would equate to that 11.4, I'm sorry, we're in safe harbor at 10, you're only going to get X number of units. Is that legal? Question. The other aspect is, this Housing Partnership, hardworking people, all well-intentioned, is like an octopus with about 11 legs. It is all over the place. And if you have any passion for the intelligence of the, or compassion for the intelligence of the citizens of Walpole, this does not belong in front of a single board, this does not belong in front of 150 representative town meeting members. This belongs in front of an educated voter at the ballot box. And that, Mr. Chairman, is what I'm suggesting. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, nobody else? Question for you?
Fellow had a question.
Me?
Yeah, that was a different point.
Terms of safe harbor, the question?
No, 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 just what he said. Have your experience had this go to the ballot?
I've had inclusionary bylaws go to the ballot and pass, yes.
Okay, what towns?
Medfield, most recently. We did that in 17.
Okay, so this is what Mr. Snuffer said is not unusual.
Not necessarily, no.
Okay, I just, I just never heard this before.
Typically, we see it, yeah, typically, I mean, it's the town's discretion, it's your local, I mean, it's based on your local charter and your local rules whether or not you, and so I haven't done a deep investigation of that, but it happens, yeah.
No, that's fine. No, it does, okay, I was just curious, thank you. Okay. Yeah, Mr. Hassanega?
Very nice presentation by consultant Starling. Could I ask, what town, are you from Boston or?
I'm from Detroit.
Detroit, okay. Well, we don't want to go to that kind of zoning.
There's no zoning that applies there, sir.
I know that. Just, I agree with certainly what Mr. Snuffer said. The Economic Development Commission entertained this this week and they asked me to report that they're not positively predisposed to support this article. They are, the chamber and the commission do represent the businesses that supposedly the salaried people here who are looking for the housing are being displaced, et cetera, et cetera. I don't know, there's any validity to the type of demand that's being portrayed. I guess I'm going to have to check in with the beautiful 40B up on Musial Road, which I'd be happy to move into myself. I don't know how anyone could object to something like that, a building so beautiful. And I think it's a shame, it's like a slur to people say 40B. It's affordable housing and it's a very successful viable program run by the state.
Okay, John, I got to stop here. This was here for our input. Do you have a question? Because I don't need you to give us your views, okay?
All right.
If you have a question, please, ask the question.
Yeah, I heard some views from other folks.
You heard views from this board, that's what we're here for. This is not a vote here, this is not a public hearing.
Well, I'll make the point, this is a report from the Economic Development Commission.
But you could do that at the time when we have the hearing, which is fine, but do you have a question?
Yeah.
Okay.
The, there's two presentations of a justification for this. One being the people who don't want any of this state affordable housing, so they want to get to the safe harbor that you described, Mr. Conroy. And I think then people who are pushing this are people who want much more affordable housing in Walpole. They do not want the 10%. They're not trying to find us an escape clause to get around 40B. They're trying to find a pathway to have unlimited affordable housing. And I think there's a big sentiment of folks who maybe don't want that type of community environment. So there's some sort of a misrepresentation, and I do agree with Mr. Snuffer, virtually no one knows about this. From the preamble, this affects everyone in town. It talks about the schools, it talks about parents.
Do we have a question, please? Do you have a question to ask?
I'm making a statement.
I, John, this is, I asked you for a question. I don't need, you're not here to do a statement.
Okay, well, my question to.
It's not a public hearing, I allowed you to come when we have a discussion, so you've been invited as a gift.
I'd like to know if the overlay category is different than the IZ category that you had on your charts. Most of our neighboring towns have an overlay. They don't have what you're proposing. So how is that different? Only, the overlay only is allowed in certain streets and then the rest of the town is not subject to this, is that?
So what we have in the overlay districts are most typically smart growth districts, permitted under chapter 40R. And that has specific affordability requirements in order to get state funding for this. It's a tax formula that if you build housing, the state will pay you back for doing it and will give you school cost reimbursement. So it's typically done in those bylaws, we see it, and I've seen it, there are a few senior housing bylaws where it applies. But most predominantly, they're either straight inclusionary or they're, some of the overlays are offset by a minimum project size and can apply anywhere as long as the project is that size and some of them are tied to specific geography. There's a lot of variation, but the main thing is that they, where they are overlays instead of bylaws, it's because there's a specific program, kind of.
So if you could just simplify all that, is it limited in those towns to specific streets? Or is it the whole town like it is in the column we're in?
It varies.
That's just a yes or no answer, which is it?
It depends on the town. And so I have a chart for it, there's a handout for it, I'll give you the chart and that.
All right, well, I think that's deceptive, you're going to use it at a town meeting.
If we can talk offline when we're not here at the conference, I'll talk to you more about it.
You're making us think that some of our neighboring towns are doing this and they're in a different category altogether, it's a different approach.
Yeah, I'll, we'll talk after the meeting, I'll tell you more about it. Thank you.
Good luck. All right, you all set?
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since we're asking questions, my name is Ben Barrett, I'm a member of the Select Board. And my question is just for the board in general is, we're talking about, well, maybe with this summer street project, we're going to get to 10%. Maybe we will, maybe we won't. Maybe with the census coming up, the denominator will be increased because of all the market rate units and we won't make it. So my question is, you know, what would you say, what would any of us say who's on a board in town to the people in South Walpole who are dealing with this summer street project? To the people on Burns Ave who are dealing with that 40B project? When you say, well, we don't, we don't think we're going to need the IZB and then it turns out that we do and we again get, you know, victimized by 40Bs as has been taking place. So it's easy for all of us and on the Select Board, I know we're guilty of pontificating sometimes too, but to say that we're going to make it over 10 and it's no problem, you know, there's real residents in Walpole being affected by these projects when they happen. And so if we do get to 10%, it's because many residents in Walpole are being impacted. And so if we do get to ten percent, it's because many residents in Walf, Walpole are being impacted. So my question is, what, what would the board say to them? Say, we're not going to do an IZB because we're at our ten percent. Thank you, South Walpole, for playing. Sorry, you know, we couldn't do more for you. So that would be my question.
But this won't impact them. So those projects are already on the, those projects are already out there and this doesn't impact them. So if we've reached the ten percent, then there isn't an issue.
Right, and so we've never had an IZB, which means that we've had projects, which means people have been impacted. It just so happens that we've been caught under an avalanche of them. And we might make our ten percent, and we might go below ten percent in the next fifteen years. And what are we going to do then? We'll be right back here, starting where we are now. And what are we going to say to those people that get forty Bs in the interim? You know, ah, we didn't think we needed it. I, it doesn't- I really, I thought Courtney really put it well, but she said that this is, we're doing this to get control over it so that we can build the way, um, the code is in town now. So that we avoid three hundred units on Summer Street. That, that's what we're trying to do here.
You're not going to, Summer Street's filed, it's dead, it, it's gone, I mean.
Yeah, that's fine.
And you mentioned about, and you mentioned about Burns Ave, I've been affected a hundred percent because I, I've butted to it. And you know what I got from the town? Nothing. Nobody helped. Only one that became the three hundred units of people in South Walpole. So I know what it's like going through that. As far as the three hundred units, I sat there and I watched the lawyers and they just opened and let it go. So I'm going to tell the people in South Walpole, it's just, you think someone's going to fight, ain't happening. It's, it's-
That's what, I'm just saying that's what this is. This is what we're saying to those people in South Walpole.
But what I'm saying, as I said before, is, once we exceed it, why do we got to keep exceeding it?
Well, we don't even have it yet, so, you know, if we can talk about exceeding it when we get there, I'm all ears. The Select Board is all ears, wants to do that, you know.
And I, I hear what you're saying, I understand what you're trying to say. My thing is, I wish we could set a cap. And what I mean is, you know, if it's ten percent, we set eleven percent or something like that. So yes, I understand we want to, I completely grasp, we want to keep up to the number or, you know, so that we aren't the victim.
Sure.
Like we are on those two projects you mentioned.
Sure.
There's no question you're a victim when that happens, because you don't have a say. And I feel for all those people. And I'm not saying, and I do think we need affordable housing, no question. But my concern is, and I understand we could repeal it, but will we repeal it? My, I, and I don't know if it's even possible, Ben. But what I'm trying to say is, I'd love to see a number within reason so we're hovering in a safe harbor, but we're not going and changing the whole town. Do you know what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, no, I, I hear what you're saying a hundred percent, yeah, yeah.
I, I get what you're trying to say, but I, I just-
Right, and so what I would say to that is, this, and I, as I've said all along at, at the Select Board meetings, this isn't the end, right? Like, we don't pass this and everything's fine, it solves all our problems. Maybe that's another problem that you bring up, right? There's many problems with, um, the code in Walpole that need to be addressed. So it's not like we set this down and we all go about our way and, and ignore it, you know? Um, if, if we want to revisit it and talk about putting a cap on it, then we can engage the housing partnership, we can engage consultants.
So just to the consultant, if I could, is that something that can be done? You can put a percentage in there?
That would be very tricky with fair housing regulations. I would have seriously questions, I think it'd be in the budget.
Uh, I mean-
I'll, I'll refer to town council, though, who is here.
I don't want to go off on a tangent, it was just a-
No, we, you know, this was supposed to be a twenty minute, we're already an hour and a half, we got other people here and it's not fair to them either. And this is only was discussion with us, you know, I'm not cutting you off, Ben, don't mean it, but-
No, sorry.
That, uh, you know, you got people waiting to come up. So I think we're all set. My only comment, to the housing partnership, I would expect you people to know exactly what the impact is when, when boy, uh, South Walpole goes on so that you can say where we are, as opposed to everybody's going, well, we're not quite sure. That's going to come up, I'm giving you advice, whether you take it or not, that's, that's fine. But that's certainly going to come up, is what does this affect and where do we stand? That's, that's a very pertinent question that a lot of people ask. And I would hope you guys have all the facts and figures to support everything you're doing, so that you show that you're trying to do it for the betterment of the town and you have all those. So with that being said, I assume you guys are going to town council, I think. Jonathan, you here for that?
Uh, yes, I am.
You don't want to say anything, do you?
All right, did you have, is there a question?
No. Do you want to go home?
I'm going to go to their meeting.
Oh, you're here for that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, okay, all right, well, all right, so we're all set, there's no need for vote, because this is just discussion, give our input. So there's nothing really to vote on, so I think you've got our input, Ashley and Courtney and, and Jonathan and the rest of you, so you can go have your meeting. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
John, for a while there I thought, gee, did you go to the other side working for a developer? With all the plans next year?
We're going to sit here with John.
Yeah. He went to the dark side.
David says you're not being built to this one.
Yeah, yeah, that doesn't go against our budget. Okay, um-
Can I have an old, Jeff?
What? Yeah. How, do we have, what's in, let's bang the A and R out too, quickly, because, um, Phil, we're going to bang, where is he?
This is Joanne's doing the A and R.
Oh, Joanne, who's doing Nupan?
Oh, Nupan is Phil.
Phil. What are you, what are you here for, Joanne?
Uh, Peach Street, the A and R.
Okay, all right, sit. Joanne, we'll take you now because you've been sitting patiently too, bang this out of the way. Okay, I'm sorry, let's see, Peach Street. Um- Now, if I under-
Doing a non-buildable?
If, okay, we're doing A and R, and if I understand you're trying to knock the back lot out, correct?
Correct, yes, so-
And if I know per zoning is, it doesn't matter where, if, what your frontage is, it doesn't matter what your setback, because it's existing and you're not making it any more non-conforming.
Correct.
And you are just cutting out, and I don't mean to go over the, the board, but what happens is if your house exists, what zoning says is, you can cut that back as long as, if they took it below the minimum lot requirement, they can't do that. But it exists, these exist, the fr, uh, the frontage exists, the setbacks, there's nothing you can do. And this doesn't affect, that's what they're saying, you can't make it any more non-conforming. And I just wanted to say that so everybody understands. Did I take your thunder?
A little bit, but I like it that you said it and not me, so.
I mean, I like it, but-
Uh, no, so yes, it is, it's a pre-existing non-conforming as to frontage, everything else conforms. We're not changing the frontage, uh, we're not making any change that, um, creates any additional non-conformities. It is, uh, we did sit down, uh, Dan Merrickin, um, is the engineer on this project, and he wasn't able to be here tonight, but we did sit down with Carl several weeks ago, went over the plan with him, made some changes at his suggestion. And, uh, that's about it in a nutshell, we're, we're just here for an A and R. It is labeled as a non-buildable lot, uh, the, the back lot.
Okay, but it's still staying on the same ownership, correct?
For now it is, um, it, it will at some point transfer to another ownership.
All right, I don't, Kyle, are you seeing it?
I'm good.
You guys, everyone's set?
Good, yeah.
All right, um- Let's zoning.
So they're going to build a house here, is that what they're going to do?
Yeah.
It's, it's non-buildable, as a, as existing.
Yes.
So, yeah, it, so the second house would be-
Could be here, could be there, could be there, could be there.
Yeah, you can, you can still cut your land up, but it's, as long as it's non-buildable, you can, you could do it a thousand pieces if you wanted.
Right.
But it doesn't make it buildable. If, so if you, they went for, uh, what do you call it, Phil, they went down the building permit, the guy goes, nope. No frontage, not the right thing, and so on, but you can divide your land up any way you want.
But that's all they're doing, just building it up.
Yeah.
For now.
We know that something's coming in the works, but you've seen in the past where people swap to someone needs a piece.
Maybe doing this for-
Yeah, maybe this guy is joining with them.
Yeah, I see, yeah, okay.
Uh, make a motion to endorse an A and R plan, the twenty-four peach?
Second.
There's a second, any discussion, all in favor? All right.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Phil, you ready to set up here? You're going to be up. Nupan Village.
Yeah. Don't want me to throw it? It's only one shade. Just up, son.
Phil, before you get going, I assume someone's going to get it next week or something, or you're going to take it with you tonight?
I'll take it when I leave.
Okay. All right, we have a continued public hearing on Nupan Village, case number yada, 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 yada.
Jeff, but we did not read comments, um, for the third revision, so the third and fourth are both there.
Okay, we got third and fourth revision comments.
They were not read.
I would assume that you peep, uh, okay.
Everything in third was incorporated before.
Going to have the continued public hearing, seven thirty, being after seven thirty, we're going to continue public hearing for Nupan Village nineteen oh three. And what we got here is, we have some comments, so I'll read those first. I assume you've already, I would hope you guys already have them, but we got, at least everyone who's here has to understand it. From the conservation, the conservation issued an order conditions on twelve twenty, twelve twenty eighteen? Oh, I'm sorry, and amended ten six nineteen. Okay, uh, the ZBA, November twenty-fifth, the project was granted a special permit and variance is requested. I'll save Kyle's, from Deputy Chief Barry, dated December third. Uh, the, the change of the per, permanent pavement does not appear to, does appear to be more preferable option than the previous proposed permeable pavings. However, we do have concern with the pavement durability of this proposal. We support the recommendation of town engineer, December third letter, that the widening is done with conventional pavement and the continuous strip of perme, permeable, yeah, pavement is installed in the proposed driveway parking lot. The rear access road has minimal fire department usage over the years and will now be a main access to the new eight residential must be able to support an eight thousand pound fire apparatus. We were unclear if this was known on the plan. We request no parking, fire lane markings be put along the rear, the emergency access road. We advise emergency access lane must comply to five twenty-seven CMR one, chapter eighteen, fire department access and water supply. And we would like the applicant to work with the fire department to ensure the emergency responder radio coverage is provided throughout the buildings. Okay, uh, December twentieth, from Board of Health, Board of Health is the December nineteenth meeting, voted unanimously, it is not their intent to start development, but it is important for folks occupying these properties close to wetlands be educated on not only what they can do, but what they should do regarding mosquito mitigation. The board was informed by the presentation conducted by the senior wetland scientist, Nicole Hayes, regarding the project onsite wetlands as well as mos, mosquito mitigation strategies. The board is in agreement, and they would like to see the following, a person designated to work with Norfolk County Mosquito Control to perform the treatments, a maintenance program urgently scheduled to clean the gutters and properly grade in the buffer zone, some low, low points for, to hold water, and biological tablets, briquettes to be provided for all stump catch basins found on the property. And Kyle, do you want to read them or?
I don't have them before me, Mr. Chairman, but I do recall them in general, if you want me to go over them.
See what you remembered, I'll tell you.
Um, we had some comments, um, earlier, we had some comments, um, regarding the form of the plans. Uh, we first, uh, in memorandum, December third, we suggested instead of widening, um, there are a number of spots on the site plan where existing pavement needed to be wide, widened for various reasons for the fire department to meet, um, planning board's regs at twenty-four feet, et cetera. Um, instead of doing spot widening with pervious pavement, we suggested locating all the pervious pavement in one area and doing spot widening with conventional pavement. We also noted that we weren't superseding the fire department's requirements. We had a number of items with, um, planned presentation, site plan, uh, information on the cover sheet. We also asked that the approval block be modified and noted the site plan decision needs to be printed on the, um, final endorsement set. Um, and we suggested a review of these items before, um, we went to endorsement. Subsequently, we received plans, um, all the items were incorporated. And, uh, there were some very minor edits, um, to the roadway widening detail, um, in our last comments, although I don't know if the board-
I'll jump, yeah, I'll jump to those because you're doing yours. Kyle, that's, uh, from revision four, just so you-
Okay.
To make it more consistent.
So at the end of it, everything was, um, addressed. However, we noticed that the demolition plan didn't reflect, um, removing the pavement, existing pavement that was going to be replaced by pervious, um, that outstands now and, and could be a condition of approval. Um, and we also noted that we wanted the, um, pavement widening to reflect, um, various items. Um, not, and not have the binder coat overlap, uh, or be in line with the top coat. Um, all those comments were, I haven't seen them on the plans, but, um, all those comments were discussed with Mr. Bernardino of Boulder Engineering. He agreed, and as far as I'm concerned, there were no further items for us on this approval.
All right, so that takes care of three, now four. Board of Appeals, it's the longest letter I think we ever got, is they gave a special, uh, they modified a special case, fifty-one eighty-six is amended. And they give you a special permit regarding section eight four C to allow reduction in parking and find the existing parking is pre-existing, non-conforming, and may be altered to bring more compliance. So what it was is saying what they'd already done, correct?
Yes.
And along the way, uh, from Police Department, Luke Pollon, officer, uh, the tax plan's been reviewed and Walpole Police Department does not have any public safety concerns. From the Board of Health, January eighth, Board of Health is its January seventh meeting, voted that they are pleased with Nupan heard their words regarding, uh, mosquito borne illness, illnesses, which are more prevalent in wetlands, and updated their plan to include the precautionary measures. And CONCOM, at their one eight twenty meeting, conservation discussed the location of pervious pavings at the rear of the property near the proposed cottages, and has shown revised plans and agreed that the change is acceptable as it maintains the volume of infiltration required on the Wetlands Act. And an updated one, January thirteenth, from the Deputy Chief Paul Barry, Fire Chief. He's down to no parking lane, fire lane markings be along the back. The emergency access lane must comply to CMR, five twenty-seven CMR one, chapter eighteen. And we want them to work with the fire department to ensure the responder radio coverage. So that is all the updated ones we have to date, uh, and those are all passed. And that being said, you have time?
Very good. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Phil Mackey. Mackey and Mackey is Councilman Ford on behalf of the applicant, twelve fifty-six Washington Street, Norwood, Massachusetts. In the addressing of the comments, I think you hit the most, the, the high points. When we left in October, we had a couple of outstanding issues. Sarah asked us to look at the fence around the dumpster on the resident, excuse me, the, um, nursing home side and the width of the main driveway through the site. Uh, the plans now show a fence around the dumpster and a twenty-foot wide exclusive of the parking stalls width of the main, uh, main driveway in. Um, as far as the Board of Health, I think the, uh, letter speaks for itself. And the very last piece they had was talking about, you know, coordinating with Norfolk County Mosquito Control, um, as- coordinating with Norfolk County Mosquito Control, um, as appropriate, and we have no problem having that as a condition of approval. As far as the fire department, you can see that we went through multiple iterations where the pavement is, whether or not the truck can be on it. And again, I'll let his letter speak for himself. As far as the no parking fire lane markings along the rear access road, we'd ask that that be a condition of approval to be put on the plans prior to endorsement. Don't have any issue with it. And as far as the emergency access lane must comply with five twenty seven CMR one, chapter eighteen, again, no issues. We just put that in as a condition of approval per the fire department's request. So that covers the Board of Health, fire, and I think the outstanding issues, the one thing asked to do a draft, didn't have in there was, um, having Carl's changes made prior to endorsement, which of course we have absolutely no problem with as well. I think that covered everything that was outstanding when I left here in October, and so barring any questions, I'm done with my presentation piece.
Okay, do you guys have anything to present?
Only if you've got questions.
Yeah, I always like the later you go, the quieter you get. Go this way, Sarah, you have any questions, comments?
Um, I just have one question, actually. In, in the beginning sheets, the zoning analysis table, it lists the size of the project as twenty-nine point one seven acres. However, on the, on the back sheets, the ones done by others, um, it lists nineteen point four acres.
Incorrect.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you a brief explanation on that. Basically, um, our surveyors looked at the property and provided a detailed survey of the majority of the development area.
Okay.
Now, it's actually split to two condominium lots, but it's property as a whole, so that nineteen acres is the New Pond Village portion.
Okay.
The difference in that is the remaining part, but as it's a complex, it's considered as one for the zoning analysis table. So that's the discrepancy.
Okay, um, all right, that's all I have then, thank you.
Go.
Just wanna thank you for doing all the, uh, all the, the, uh, request that the board had, particularly the, uh, increasing the, uh, the main driveway. I think that was ready to do, so I have no other questions.
Okay, all right, Kate?
I'm good.
Good, John?
I'm good, too.
All right, I can't remember any, 'cause when you started, I couldn't get in, now I'm eligible.
Talk to Bill, I'm sure he can find a good unit for you.
Oh, I imagine, yeah, I'll be out with the bugs. Any questions, comments from the audience regarding New Pond Village? There's none, and we're all set, I'll make a motion to close.
Second.
A second, any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, okay. Do we have a drafty decision, Kate? Oh, we get the one we had before, okay. The only special conditions were, that I recall, was just the ones we just talked about.
Right, and the one that's not in the draft is Carl's letter.
Oh, okay. Yeah, these are just outstanding conditions, you printed out, okay.
And then the, the special conditions.
Okay, and I'll make a motion, special, we'll start one, I mean, I don't say it right, but one would be the special conditions of, uh, requirement by Deputy Chief for the fire lane markings. Number two would be in accordance with his request on five twenty seven CMR one for the access. And the third one was the, in Carl's letter, would be in cor- as part of the special conditions. And that, and the fourth one, naturally, always, anything changed or it has to get on there will be done before we-
Yes.
Sign off, okay?
Mr. Chairman, they have listed also the mosquito control.
Oh, they do?
Yeah, he's already added that.
Board of Health asked for it, we don't have any-
All they want on this?
Yeah, applicant will coordinate with Norfolk County Mosquito Control as appropriate.
Plans and operation means, but it's having incorporated that already.
Yeah.
Submission documents have incorporated those comments, so maybe redundant to make it a condition of approval, but I defer to you on that.
Wanna add further, Board of Health, so everybody understands?
Sure.
Yep.
Okay, we'll add per the Board of Health, so if you don't need the bill, Inspector asking Kate, what about the bugs?
There is no.
Okay, any other questions, comments, everybody all set, okay? Make a motion to approve site plan deci- case number nineteen oh three. Have a second?
Second.
A lot of seconds, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. You got yours, Kate, right, so? All right, now, I'm gonna take, I think I'll take one more out of order, is- We'll do the other business. We have another business, I'm gonna jump before Bristol, they used to late hours, so they can just chill.
What you doing?
I do, uh, Sycamore Heights, somebody here from Sycamore?
I am.
Yep. Oh, that's the other one, John, okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, we were in front of you, um, at the preliminary plan, uh, just to give you a quick reference of where this is. High Street is here, um, you may know, round the Thilio's house down here, now that, uh, the Walnuts bought that and that's the plan that the planning board has approved, uh, the construction, but, um, our site is across the street from that, and there's a paper street, Sycamore Lane, and our Sycamore was already been picked up there, and that's here. It actually runs between High Street and Pemberton Street. So, um, our property, my client's property, it was that in the rear here. And we came in front of you, taking the two lots, making the two lot subdivision, and basically the board said, this is a forty-foot wide layout to set precedent, approving two lot subdivision on forty foot layout, or a subdivision on forty foot layout. So, just a quick question, if we reduced it to simply one lot, thirty-nine thousand square feet, so it would not be, have the capability of being a two lot subdivision because it's twenty thousand square foot requirement? I know you're not really gonna vote, but I guess we're just kinda looking for a consensus. My client did talk to the butter here, she is not amenable to either selling six feet or granting an easement of six feet. So, do that is sort of not even the cards right now, so, just sort of a consensus kinda thing or whatever. If a one lot subdivision, basically a driveway, we're showing at eighteen feet wide now with cul-de-sac, would be something the board may be willing to entertain as a subdivision.
Okay, the question, that's one lot now, John?
It's actually two lots now. So there's two, if you can see this little dash line, it's actually two separate lots now, but in the-
Are you affecting the other lot?
No.
The one on High Street?
No.
So you're not?
No, that's an existing lot with frontage on High Street, and it's, it's over twenty thousand square feet.
Okay, so my next question is that, the one you're showing me is actually, if I, it was two lots, or two parcels, let's put it that way.
Yeah, yeah.
And High Street is one to itself, and where you're showing me where the cul-de-sac is, is actually two.
Yeah, yeah, there's two lots right here, so, you know, um, Sycamore Street is just forty feet wide, keeps going all the way, and there's two lots here. They, on their own, they do not conform to current zoning because one of them only has a hundred feet of frontage and wherein is residential B, where we need a hundred and twenty-five.
Where's the hundred feet, where's the frontage?
I believe it's, so, if, well, if Sycamore Street were a street, this lot here only has twenty feet of frontage on Sycamore Street, so it would not on its own. In other words, if Sycamore Street was a street today, this would not be a building.
Correct, okay.
This one would, so the whole idea would be to create the cul-de-sac, make it one lot, because at that point it would be slightly less than, um, what you could make two lots, and just develop it as one lot.
And we do know there's no such thing as a one lot subdivision, it's what they call an A and R, correct?
Uh, I, that's a good point.
There's no such thing, so you can't have a one lot subdivision. And if you're gonna have a subdivision, what it says in subdivision control is all the lots must meet zoning, correct? You just can't do it two by two to say, there's another lot, two foot by two foot.
No, no, I, I hear what you're saying.
Okay, but so what we're, we're going back to, and when this, a long time ago, we had a battle here. You were in town engineer with Mr. Carney over this, and his father, and he said this, it's either a subdivision or an A and R, but you can't have a one lot subdivision.
Okay.
That's one point, the other point I think I brought up is whether you get the forty-six feet or not, I mean, or not, is the fact that the street per seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, that paper streets cease to exist and the owners of both sides own to the middle.
Right.
So that, that whoever owns all along there would have to agree or be part of the application.
Well, they, they definitely own to the center of Main Street, I don't, the rest of it, I'm, I'm gonna take your word for it, but I don't, I don't-
No, I'm very well acquainted, especially in Burns Ave, is that, yeah, this, this happened a, a long time ago. The only thing I do, and I'm not trying to bore people, but if there was property at the end, what I was told is that would be owned by the guy at the end. But since this is a cut through, everybody owns that middle.
To the center.
Yeah, and then, and back in the seventies, they didn't want towns ended up having the, someone says, where's my road? And the towns would be stuck with it. So, the way I, I see it right now, not being attorney, but from my experience, is you'd have to either buy out the people and they'd give it to you, or they would be co-applicants for this.
Yeah, okay.
And if you bought, and if you bought out the people on one side, you might get your, I don't know what their zoning requirements are, John, but if they bought the six feet from that side, you might not need a waiver. But I don't know how deep their yards are, you follow the, I think, what streets-
Yeah, Joel.
That's Joel.
You're old on Joel Ave, and, and I don't know their lot sizes either, so I'd have to look into it.
Yeah, there's, there's options, they have options to do it, but the legal way to do it, but if they did go, uh, but if they made it a two lot subdivision, which would, and I don't know if you changed, would the house existing on High Street meet it or not? No, it's, I could-
Well, we came in front of you with the preliminary plan, with the two lot subdivision.
Yeah, but-
And so, we're, and so, I, I understand what you're saying. So we're back to the two lot subdivision and to attempting to make the lot forty-six, make the right way thirty-six.
The existing house, does that have the thirty foot setback to the lot line, that would now be the backyard, correct?
Um, yeah, that has thirty.
Lot goes through the pool.
No, no.
This here, is that what you're talking, this is the existing house, this is the existing lot.
Oh, okay.
We didn't change that.
Oh, okay.
We're not changing that, so, this is the existing lot.
Yeah.
So this lot is an existing, I believe it's an existing conforming lot.
Okay.
It has slightly more than twenty thousand square feet, oh, I know that as a fact.
Oh, with an A and R, we can't endorse it naturally, because you're not on a public way.
Way.
And for subdivision, you know, not even the forty foot versus forty-six feet, the fact that the road is owned by one, two, three, four, ma- five, yeah, whatever within your realm that you'd be dealing with, so that's the other way, that's the way to do it.
Yeah, okay.
I'd, uh-
Can I ask the client's name?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can.
Sure.
John, can I just ask, how long and how wide did you say that street was, I'm sorry?
So, it's forty feet wide, um, are you talking about to here? I mean, it goes all the way through to Pemberton, this is John Simeon's stuff, so-
What you would build, so?
Um, that's a good question, I'm gonna say it's about two hundred feet.
It's about three hundred and fifty.
Uh, three hundred, three hundred and fifty feet.
And how wide did you say it was?
Well, the right of way is forty feet, so I'm showing an eighteen foot wide roadway within that forty feet because it was only gonna serve one house.
Okay.
But I understand what the chairman's saying, that technically there is nothing, there's no, uh, in, in the, in the subdivision control, where there really is nothing that allows you to have one lot subdivision.
So, hi, I'm Deborah, I'm the client, this is my husband Leon, I'm the less shy one, so I'm gonna try and just make two points and then ask a question, so we can get done. It's been a long night, and I, we probably picked a bad night to come do a discussion. Two points that I wanna make, um, before we bought the property, we came to the town, um, it was Margaret and another town engineer. We wanted to make sure that we had access to that paper street, um, called Sycamore. It's been there since nineteen oh two with subdivision that created those two lots, um, and that road. So what they told me was if I could prove that the road was there, it would be grandfathered at the forty feet. If, if I could prove that the road was there before the zoning laws changed, which means it was non-conforming. So our surveyor, um, went and proved that and found the nineteen oh two plan that created the road. And so we went forward, this is like almost three years ago now, um, and bought the land. On a by the way type of a note, the woman who was, we bought it from, um, was just about to file bankruptcy, and she owed the town eighty thousand dollars, and so when we closed, that was paid off. The other point that I wanna make, um, is something that we dug up, um, that on the nineteen oh two plan, Joel Avenue didn't even exist. That Sycamore Street came first, and that all of the Joel Avenue residents would have had front-facing lots on Sycamore Street. So the town came in and approved, probably because it's a better build, a new road that took our rights away from Sycamore Lane or Street, whatever you wanna call it, effectively, when the town approved that new road called Joel Avenue, and all those houses, um, now have the use of Joel Avenue. There's two landowners on the other side, which basically, you know, by that road being created, that didn't exist before, basically cut our hands off in a way, we have land, but we don't have access to it. And so, we're, we were under the impression that the laws allowed this to be grandfathered as a forty-foot strip. All the other roads around the area are forty feet wide, um, and that's what our intention was, to gain access to the land, um, and that's what we were told by the town. So, that's the two points that I wanted to make, also, my other landowner, um, following the other landowner, John, um, Simeon, respected lawyer in this town, about ready to retire, he is also looking to eventually, the bigger plan that we're trying to get to, I'm just the first step in the bigger plan. He wanted to be a public road, um, the biggest, the, I'm just a small step in getting to that. A builder's ready to buy my land, but they're not gonna take the risk. John is waiting to find out what's going on. His land and the road are already, the road at forty feet called Sycamore Lane Street, I keep calling it the wrong thing, um, is already land courted. The land court, his land, that's his house and three other lots along Sycamore Lane, has been land courted, and it includes, and that was a couple decades ago. It includes that forty foot as forty feet, and it's been land courted, so those are the three points, and I guess what we're trying to do is when, we're making a compromise to do this one lot, private driveway to it, um, it, sorry. I'd be happy to have this one lot and a private driveway to it. It would be more marketable, of course, if it was a public road, because my builder's got a much bigger plan ahead. You know, it's gonna be more marketable for me to sell it to a builder if it's on this public road that's grandfathered. So I guess we wanna ask is, you know, we've got the two options, as we see it, the one that we bring to you, um, which is a private driveway to a, a one lot, um, and use of that Sycamore Lane Street. Or we come back with, um, a plan that's, I, we're willing to even come back with a plan that's one lot with a public road, so we don't have this big circle, um, there. Right now, the two lots, I would need this big turnaround to make the two lots conforming. I'm saying, okay, we're, we've been three years in, into this project, we're just simple homeowners, we're not, you know, um, we're not developers, just trying to create a living for my family, and we've got the other option of, um- Just trying to create a living for my family and we've got the other option of, um, coming back, asking for that road to be grandfathered and only asking for the one lot. At least the builder then can go forward with his plan and John Simone, who's waiting, but is, um, fighting an illness right now and is not ready to. But he's gonna wanna be able to also take care of his family. And the only way to do that and provide is to have it a public road at forty feet. As it was planned in nineteen oh two, Joel Avenue didn't even exist, and I can show you the plan that shows you Joel didn't exist. By the town approving Joel Avenue, it basically just said, okay, so the people on the north side of Sycamore Lane don't have access anymore. And so that's why we're, we've got two options, and those are, I'm willing to come back with one lot and not two, and just have it as a forty foot public roadway. And then the bigger pa- plan can go through. You can get your public road from end to end, from Pemberton to High Street, and it would be what the town is looking for. And that's, I guess, all I've got.
Okay, now, once, I'll summarize it once again, is you can't do a one lot subdivision.
Right, so I'm not, I didn't, whatever it's called, I'm sorry, I'm.
Can't do one lot, that's out. It's called an A and R, approval not required. We did two tonight.
What do you mean, one lot subdivision?
There's no, no, the subdivision is not one lot. That's not, you're not subdividing any.
What I'm showing only shows one lot.
One lot.
It is this, Massachusetts, there's, it's kind of weird language, but there's approval not required, which is.
So we wouldn't call it a one, a subdivision, is that what you're saying?
It is a subdivision, that's the problem, because, because there's no public street.
If you had a, if this was an A, for an A and R, for one lot, you'd have to have the proper frontage and it would have to be on a public way accepted, which is High Street. Sycamore does not exist as a public way.
It should be grandfathered.
No, you don't grandfather, you don't, these aren't grandfathered in, cause they're not a way.
Non-conforming unless you can.
It was never built, but it, it was created back in nineteen oh one, but there was, there's a lot of stuff drawn that never got built. That's what the state decided nineteen seventy-one or seventy-two, is there was all these paper streets, which we'll call it for that. And they didn't want people coming, like you going down to the town, not you, but someone there built Sycamore, and it's like, whoa, we don't have the money to do that. So what they said is to, to circumvent people coming up and start want the town to build them roads, they said the center line. This owner owns this, this owner owns that, to the center line. So you own to the center line. Uh, as far as access, as far as I know, you do have access, cause you, you have Sycamore as your access. Now, the other thing, and I'm very familiar with something like this, cause I have my own, I said on Burns Ave, is there's another thing you gotta watch out for on this, is someone doesn't like, it's called an overburdened and easement. Right now, that's an easement, Sycamore. So that allows you to get to your property. But if you start developing it beyond what it is now, that's called overburdening. And that's, that's a legal term in the, in the Commonwealth that you, one of your neighbors could challenge you on that, but as a board, we.
Yeah, and we have law on our side and a case on our side that shows, my lawyer, Tom Brady, he's just not here tonight. We didn't think we would need him for a discussion.
Well, it's a discussion.
Case law on our side regarding a, a road that's, a paper street and, you know, but.
I guess I'll let the others speak. I, we don't sit here and give out legal advice. So if you wanna come forward with your plan and you're all set with your lawyer, then, then so be it. But I wanted to explain some of the ramifications that you have for that.
The hurdles that you have, and I explained them to you.
Right, right.
I said the exact same thing. Any one of those abutters can appeal.
I know that, that's.
This board approves it. Any one of those abutters can appeal.
We, we know that.
Because it's not your property.
Well, what I will say, John, and I, is we could not take that application without, without their signatures. Cause they would be considered pot owners if you're gonna use that road.
So even in the last plan, the only thing that we came, that we came away with was that it needed to be forty-six feet wide. And even though we tried, that didn't come apart, come away with a lot, from the last meeting that we needed all of the signatures.
I'll, I'll say this about your forty-six feet, you may have something that I'm not aware of, that if something was created for forty feet, you might be grandfathered. Okay? That's on, if you're grandfathered and that's the way it, court, uh, case law says, we don't, we, we can't go against that. So your six feet is not your problem. The people who own to the center line on Joel Ave.
So our next step would be to come back with the, the original plan and put it before you? And then worry about what the neighbors are gonna say or how they're gonna fight?
No, as I said before, if you're gonna build a road and it's gonna come on Sycamore, all those property owners own to the middle. Their, their names will have to appear on the application as co-applicants, as owners.
Not what, yeah, so there's a disconnect between the lawyer, um, our lawyer and what he's saying and what he, what came out of it.
Well, I'm not gonna get in the middle of that, maybe.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll talk to Tom.
Maybe John can talk to Tom. I have.
We'll talk to Tom.
I could be a hundred percent wrong, but I'm facing it myself. Like I said, you're six feet. You may have a very valid point, cause a lot of stuff before, I think twenty-five was the kick date, nineteen twenty-five, did, yeah, forty feet, you're all set. But because it's a paper street, that's a, that's a hurdle.
Right, I think that he found that. We had the perfect, we had rights to use that road. We didn't need the lawyer, we didn't need the neighbors to sign off. So that wasn't even brought up on the last meeting, because it wasn't even an issue, so. Just thank you, I know it's late.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine, but worry about the six foot later.
We'll talk, we'll talk.
Yeah, that's, that's at least, in my opinion. Anybody else?
Can I just ask, um, do you have the cooperation of the, the home at fifty-nine High Street?
She is Claudia, we, she's the neighbor that we off, made offer, an offer to. Even a realtor, um, has said that our offer was way above, you know, what would be normal and, um, that it would increase the value of her land, um, increase the value of her property. She's just not, not there.
So, so she is against creating that, that road, that Sycamore Street or something in that location?
She's not necessarily against creating the road, she just doesn't give up any land. She didn't say she was against.
We asked her right away, we tried by right away.
Because if you do, you could do a two lot with that one and this back lot, right, Jack?
My client is being misrepresented.
Go ahead.
She is unequivocally opposed to the road.
Okay.
Oh, okay, all right. Well, that could be, okay.
And we have written a letter to Mr. Brady saying so months ago.
Okay.
Right, and this, from the last conversation, you know, um, with Claudia, I mean, we're neighbors, we've taken care of her, we've done all kinds of things for her. You know, she's just, she's where she's at. She's, even though she's, she knows that it'll improve her property and she doesn't even wanna be there in five years, you know, she, she.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, from, you know, from my understanding is, is we really need something showing that legally you can do what you're asking to do. And then, you know, if the, if you show us that, then we can proceed.
Not that we did in the last plan, so that's where I'm wrong, is that that wasn't an issue the last time. So if we come for, come back with one or two.
You're gonna have to come back with a definitive plan and an application.
And I think the biggest issue last time was that you couldn't do a non-wavered plan.
Right, yeah.
That was what I have in my notes, was that was our biggest issue.
Right, the waiver was the forty.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but I think that we have, you know, that it's grandfathered, and so we were trying, we were trying to, anyway.
Where's our big lawyer? I missed him. Where is he? Oh, is he on here? Well, I guess the presenter isn't here, so we might as well skip right over it. Attorney for Bristol Brothers, is he here? Oh, no, I guess we'll continue it.
I'm the engineer, I can play one on season.
Is he on the phone? Check his phone records, see the billing.
John, did you take, did you make this plans?
I took one, no, that's.
No tie, beard.
I'm, I'm getting them all. He's not shaving.
When I first came here. Imagine if you had stopped shaving that. I, I had.
You had black hair.
When you get to the subdivision part, we need an extension.
Okay, all right. The hour being well after seven forty-five, seven forty-six, and seven forty-seven, uh, we'll open Bristol Brothers site plan, Bristol Brothers special permits, and the industrial subdivision will come at the conclusion of that. With that being said, uh, I think at the last time, we were, the biggest thing we're waiting on, but I'll read the comments here, so you have them.
Right.
These two separate ones.
Yeah, there's two separate ones.
The ones for a street name and the others underneath.
Yeah, street names, uh, requests. Please find the above referenced street name was received yesterday, but it's a, doesn't affect us only because it's not a subdivision. That's his from fire department, from Chief Bailey. He, oh, here it is. I reviewed the street names as proposed and approved. Tiger Terrace.
Tiger Terrace, Tiger Woods Terrace.
Okay, so, and, yeah, Tiger Terrace for lots, you know, twenty-nine thirty in the clubhouse. Okay, from police department, uh, this goes back November fourteenth. Did we meet since then, on November?
Uh, he didn't change the date, I just received it.
Okay. Oh, yeah, I come in today from, okay. The police department like to make sure the sightlines for the entrance to the proposed development on West Street are true and accurate. West Street is a high travel area and don't wanna create traffic hazard. Also, is there any possibility of another entrance? I believe it's, went through that the other time, and, oh, yeah, and they wanted sidewalks up to the baseball fields and because we all know that AQV people will be playing in Williamsport, right? Okay, um, yeah, that goes back last year, that's from, uh, Salute Pollen. Fire department on, uh, January thirteenth is, the applicant has requested we provide the board with the comments and, uh, regarding the, first one is regarding the street name, and the chief replied to that, which I read. The second one is the roadways within the, they wanna have the fire department confirm the roadways from the development will be paved with two inch diameter. Costs will be acceptable for emergency access during construction. And their answer was, we don't see a problem, but suggest the applicant speak with the engineer. Town engineer regarding the road specs, so that's experienced, the common practice have only minded during construction, the top applied at the end. From the Board of Health, uh, December nineteenth, Board Health, it's December seventeenth voted unanimously, it's not their intent to stop, but it's important for folks to occupy these properties close to wetlands to be educated, not only what they can do, but they, what they should do regarding mosquito mitigation. The board was encouraged by the time spent by the applicant with the Norfolk mosquito control director, Dave Lawson, regarding mosquito mitig- mitigation. And what they have here is a designated person to work with the Norfolk mosquito control, two times every spring to perform mosquito treatments for the onsite wet basin. The second one is an annual gutter cleaning during the early spring months, and the third is the insulation maintenance of an active found in the stagnant water, found in Wet Basin Three, and biological tablets will be provided for all the catch basins. You still doing the, uh, bats, or is that gone?
No, bats are gone, I understand.
Bats are gone?
We still have them on the plans, but they essentially wanted these other measures.
So you don't need bats?
We don't, we don't have to have that. We still have them on our plans.
Okay, the question would be, are you gonna leave, if you're not gonna do bats, my suggestion would be take them off. If not, and you get a real mean guy checking the final site plan before he lets you guys go, is where's the bat cave, right? All right, uh, you probably already know about this one. Eversource. Yeah, look at the big smile, I know it's coming. Uh, at our request, uh, from Eversource, dated January ninth, Eversource reviewed Bristol Brothers development revised plan, November nineteenth, as submitted by Mr. Gabe Crocker on November twenty-first. Eversource engineer has reviewed, conditionally approved the plans. Eversource engineer has provided comments for the inclusion in the conditional license agreement for the proposed project. We are now preparing an agreement. The applicant's signature wants the license to fully executed with Eversource, uh, the work in the easement may, uh, proceed as long as it follows the approved plans and complies with the terms of their license agreement. So you guys are just working out your little stuff, nothing to do with us, nothing changes, correct?
Correct.
Okay, uh, and, did we, that was it, Kate, right? That's all we have, and Kyle, you're all set?
The only issue, uh, Mr. Chairman, that I spoke with, uh, Gabe Crocker, and I think it's, uh, Jim Bristol's desire to have the flexibility to have cement concrete sidewalks in the development. Gabe and I talked about that, so I'd actually asked that, um, that be added to as a special condition, so that that, um, detail could be modified to go either or, cement or betuminous. Um, I think I'd be more than happy to have cement concrete sidewalks in the development. Just for clarifications, that would be with betuminous apron still, um, but that would be a good modification.
So they propose betuminous, but they want the option to go to concrete?
Yes.
Within the site or down, um, West Street?
No, within the site.
In the site. It's nice.
Interesting. Is that a marketing thing, I guess?
Looks nicer. It looks much nicer. I wish we had a requirement on all sidewalks to be like that. It really.
We could.
Well, it's, it's on my list of things I want.
That was, okay, uh, that's all I got for reading. Do you have anything you would like to show us or say, or?
Those are the exact, um, the exact ones that I had as well.
All right, Kyle, you're all set. Uh, I'll go John again. You got any questions or anything regarding the special permits or the site plan?
No, they addressed the, that old street that's, was my name issued last time. Anything else comes to mind? The pictures on the map. That's not really something they can deal with, though, cutting back vegetation.
Not on town?
No. Well, I'm sure the town cutting back.
Well, I think what would happen, and Kyle, correct me if I'm wrong, is if when they go to do it and they find out it's in the way, you guys say, cut it, and they'll cut it for you. Oh, we do have a, what, a two hundred and eighty, uh, what is it, six hundred and fifty-two thousand dollar new forestry truck with a chipper that could chip sequoias and all that, and a ten man.
Doesn't work?
Yeah, because that's what I saw across my house the other day.
Is that the one that picked up my Christmas tree?
But, well, I guess the question John's asking, if there is problems in this, in the way while they're working, you, you guys could have them cut it for you, right?
Yes.
Just, you know, there's, you don't have to come back to us, it's in the town property. If it's in the way, the guy who's going chop chop with the odds can just, we're not talking a lot anyway, if there is any at all, but you said your sightlines are pretty good anyway, right?
Yeah.
Okay, well, he says they're good, so it'll be you. Anything else, John?
Where'd you eat tonight?
We were starting a little later, so, um, Panera, unfortunately, sorry.
I'm good.
Interesting. They encouraged us to use the kiosk to order. The people literally at the register were encouraging us to use the kiosk. Amazing.
I was just waiting for Eversource, I'm all set, thank you.
Yep, I'm all set too. Sarah?
Just one, uh, request just about, uh, the line of sites, if, could you add that to the plan, just showing the line of site? At the West Street, to be added prior to endorsement.
John?
That's all I have.
That's all you have?
How far from the bend in West Street is the entrance? Do you know offhand?
Bend down at Renmark or the.
Yeah, where West Street goes, goes off to the left and Norfolk starts compared to where your entrance is on the other side. Do you have a rough idea? You know, I don't need any details.
I'm still trying to figure out where you're talking about.
Oh.
Cause west is fairly straight for our section, right? At five hundred?
Looking, looking west, yeah. It's been a long road, congratulations.
Well, I just wanna recognize, um, patrol, uh, patrolman Luke Harlet, who did a great job in, uh, in doing the photographs and, uh, measuring out the site.
You all set, Sarah?
Yeah, thanks.
Oh, sorry, I was trying to write this. All right, I don't have anything on those. Yeah, we're all waiting for the Edison, what you got. So we got three in front of us, the site plan, special permit.
Good, I, I think if our, our housekeeping items worked. Should, I, I think if our, our housekeeping items worked, um, to help with the drafting, et cetera. And then also, before you close, there's still the open issue with respect to the, excuse me, the filing fee. So we want to make sure that you folks acted on that before you closed.
It's not part of it. Can I close? We'll deal with that with staffed up.
Okay, thank you.
Which do you want for, do you want the filing fee, and we'll go pick this up next week?
I knew you were going to say that, that's why I just said.
We could, I can only do one thing at a time, and we're pretty open on February sixth.
Stay focused. Stay focused.
Okay. If we hadn't lived together till one in the morning, I wouldn't be like this. So, we have three here, I'll make a motion to close site plan decision, case number nineteen-eight.
Second.
I can do them all, we'll do them all as one, is that okay? Special permit, case nineteen-nine, and special, that was for the overlay water resource in nineteen-nine. Oh, they're the same?
Yeah.
Okay. The second one is for the AQV. So I have a motion, and you second it, Kate? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, okay, and, I'll make a-
Subdivision's still open.
Yeah, well, that's a separate one. Okay, we'll do that after, we'll do that on the, what, seventeenth? Okay. And this, before I make the vote, the site plan decision, I think we all have, do we all have copies, Kate?
Yes.
Okay, we have the special conditions, have you seen these, so you understand? And the only one we're adding is number twelve, that the sightline distance to be on West Street to be added to the plan prior to endorsement.
And the sidewalks.
Using the sidewalks on here already?
It, it's in there as a special provision.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we stack it.
Yes, yep. Okay. Make a motion to approve all of those?
Second.
We have a second. Any further questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? Okay, you got those. Now, we're talking money?
Thank you.
We're gonna like-
Jeff, did you do the, you just did the site plan, did you do the special permit?
No, I approved all three.
You did all three at once?
Yep. So now we're talking-
Right, so on the, if you remember, on the filing fee, it was the, where we ran out of the time with the election, et cetera, and we came back in. We had talked about, talking about it at a future date. One of the questions was, how much effort is there going to be? We know that Carl put in a lot of resources, working with us, et cetera. So, I think the number is approximately, I want to say eleven thousand dollars, if Kate's correct. So we'd ask if we could have a return or, you know, accommodation on that, that would be appreciated.
Jeez, there goes our summer. Fun, all right. I'll make a motion to reimburse the applicant, the lesser of the two, how's that?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Can we do a partial, or it has to be yes or no?
There's only one check.
Didn't he, didn't he put a check in for this one? Have to, we should have two checks.
We have eleven thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah.
And we have two, two hundred and fifty dollars for the special permits. Each of the special permits was two fifty.
So wait a minute, they didn't pay for re-filing for this?
Yeah, they did, the eleven thousand, three hundred and-
But what, but they, what was, they had a filing fee before, right?
That they paid, and it was cashed and deposited the first time around.
You don't know how much, that, okay.
Same thing, same amount.
All right. Okay, you asked a legitimate question, Sarah, and my thought is, is the fact that, the thing that turned me was, they're gonna build a sidewalk?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's the only thing that I said, oh, okay. I know it, it's a little easier with the water line, but they did offer it, so.
And they extended it to McDonald's Circle. Okay.
So, I'll make a motion to return the fee?
All three?
In its entirety?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you.
I always like to see a little grovel in it. Okay.
Subdivision?
Now.
Now we have a party.
Subdivision.
Now we have, now we have a budget for our party.
Make sure we get invited.
Be in one pool.
Okay, um, yeah, well, the subdivision, we have it in front of us, do you want to take it off? You know, leave it, what are you gonna do?
Well, we need to continue that, and Scott, what date? Right, so basically, that will have to, following the appeal and then the recording of the decision.
Okay, so you can't get banged, I understand. Actually, that's true, you'd be tied up, but, okay, when are we out?
Well, it's thirty days on site plans.
No, 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 not the appeal, when are we, I'm sorry, when's he up for this subdivision?
January, we need to-
No, we got to July.
Ninety days from that?
Ninety days, okay. I'll grant them, I'll make a motion to grant up through, what's that, May thirty?
March.
Oh, you want, you want ninety days from the end of January?
Please.
April.
May thirty-first?
April thirtieth.
Look at everybody going, yeah.
We can all, it doesn't matter, it's an extension.
Whatever you're comfortable with, it's hopefully, it'll be something that we, um-
Okay.
We'll be in a position to withdraw before we get there, that would be great.
Okay, I'll make a motion to grant up through May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, when do you want to be put on next, because we do have to schedule, or do you really care? I mean, you come back and-
You can always send a letter if you're-
No, we have to, no, we have to continue it, it's continued publication.
How far out, um, do you have dates?
Go to May twenty-first if you want.
Perfect, perfect.
Okay, I'll make a, uh, we'll continue this.
Seven fifteen.
Let's put in seven thirty, in case we get jammed again.
Why don't we give them seven?
No, just give us like ten, fifteen, something like that. We're gonna be comfortable.
Part of my life was given up that night. And I won't forget. So, okay, we'll make it, uh, May twenty-first. Continue this May twenty-first at, I'll give you seven oh five.
Great.
Okay, now, let me ask you procedurally, since you got that, you could always ask to withdraw before that, and you wouldn't have to show up.
Excellent.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, they don't have to be here to do that.
No. But we could make a request.
Correct.
Who wants to come?
Pepper. You don't.
It's just part of our routine.
It all depends on getting invited.
Okay, you guys got it?
Thank you, we really appreciate it. Good process, thank you.
Oh, wow.
Well, look how it came out.
No stone unturned, right?
True.
Tonight was Joe-
That has a pun element to it, too, with this one.
Tonight was Joe Maraski's night, he got EverSource to get the letter like he wanted, and he got his clubhouse over at Waltham.
Yeah, we spoke with Joe outside, we heard it all.
Thank you.
Good night.
Great, thanks again, thank you.
Oh, I almost put something-
Okay.
Do I sign any extensions?
Yes.
Yes.
Do I file the?
Sorry, thank you very much.
My hands are cold, please, I'm sorry.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Thanks so much, you appreciate it, thank you.
With the decision on it, recorded, copy?
No, you don't record site plans.
No, 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 the, the decision.
Oh.
They didn't know if it had to have the recording stamp.
Do you need to sign just the decision?
Yeah, you probably want Liz's town clerk.
I have Liz's, yeah.
She, yeah.
She'll just send me a letter like this, saying, there's no appeals.
Yeah, but does he, do you want to put that on the plan? No, okay, we don't need that.
Okay.
All right, but don't forget the, with the site distance.
Just email me that extension, I, I don't need him to write it tonight, but if he'll just email it to me through May thirty-first.
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, everything?
Okay, done, done.
Can I have the file, Jeff, please?
Okay. Oh, this is mine. Jimmy Lee one. Fuck, yeah. Yeah, you can have them all. How did I get Jimmy Lee's? Okay, that's like ten years ago.
What?
But fifteen, with Jimmy Lee's.
Why turn it into that?
Wow, we keep file folders. You here for Rolls-Royce? No. You presented that, I don't remember that.
I remember.
I was still on camera, I don't see it anyway, you gonna send it to Bill Highstreet? Okay. All three, please tell me he did what we asked them to do, and not add-
They're on the bottom right?
Yeah, but not, ah, heavy. Technical term, heavy page, god.
It's all over the place?
No, they're all right where they want, but, you know, we don't, we don't have to sign like catch basins and stuff.
Oh, yeah.
All right, we need this official sign-in thing. We only have one?
No, we have a signature one.
So you have to sign each page?
Yeah.
Just leave them bad.
I'll make a motion to endorse.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Doing it backwards, Kyle, is it all set?
Yes. And I'll adjust the, I'll make sure the title blocks are deleted from the detailed sheets, if that's-
Yeah, what, do you think we need to do, I never thought we did, had to. Because those are standard details.
Uh, not always, but we can do that.
Yeah, whatever you think, doesn't have to be there.
I will make that, I will make that a review item.
What about just like, one sheet?
Cover sheet?
We should give a stamping if all-
Now, the problem with the, if you just do the cover, they can switch them around. I'm more concerned about how it looks, I don't need details, show me asphalt, because-
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
They take them, we don't record some site plan.
So where do they, where do they sell it?
They just get, we get copies, we distribute them to, uh, we did that with one of them, who was that, we did that, it was one of the first ones we did, I did.
And that's where they, so they were calling it?
It was, um, it was the, um, Foundry.
But the rea, I think the reason we did it is, see, they're all over with this, you can just flip them real quick, John, right? When they're right in the corner, you see, all done. It just, the other time was where's Waldo, that's the bigger pain. What else? Oh, Boyne Estates, Foundry Reduction.
I'm still working on installing the granite curb. So we haven't made a recommendation, we will at the next meeting.
Hey, the other thing I will mention is he owes taxes on that, he's, so. I'm not voting for any reduction on anybody that owes taxes. He gotta pay his property taxes like everybody else, so why would you reduce somebody's bond if he owes taxes?
Then, if you don't want me to make a recommendation or provide it there, then let me know.
Oh, but what's left?
Yeah, well, the, he'll, there'll be some, quite a bit of curb ended by next week.
No, until he pays his, as far as I'm concerned, Kyle, I don't know how everyone else feels, until he pays his taxes, we're not doing that. I'd like to see Lou come in, we'll have a-
We belong in here, we're just talking.
I know, I'm sorry, I have to find an abbreviation.
Just, you can do anything.
No, but it's not my signature, if I do anything. Then my kids could copy it.
Are you putting your middle initial?
I'm putting my middle name.
What?
Your first name's long enough.
I got the best.
Hong Kong is not gonna, water condition, Daytona.
I'm almost there, sweetie.
Kate, next meeting is, do we have anything on for the sixth?
I have nothing on for the twentieth at this point, either.
Good. So the only thing we could possibly get on for the, the sixth is out because we're too close. And the twentieth, well, actually, I should say that.
Twentieth is school vacation week.
Yeah, no, I, we always try to avoid that. The only thing is, so everybody understands, is an A and I, you get twenty-one days to act, so.
Right, you have to have an A and I.
So we'd have to go for that, but that's the only thing that could come in that really-
The only other thing right now is TMC.
What's TMC? Oh, well, that's, oh, yeah. That's a good one. Oh, um. Mr. Mackey informed me of something last night that I found very interesting, is Phil wasn't there on the board at time. Chick-fil-A is not coming to the Waltham Mall.
Oh, really? Why not?
Why not? Why not? Can, we're, same on TV, know it, engineer. Let's put the pad that was approved years ago, the future pad.
Yeah.
Let's put all the drainage under it.
That's a bummer.
Well, now we did it there, and they didn't even know it when they came in front of us, that's even more stupid, you think about it, right? All you had to do was open the plant.
Wow.
And what would you say, it's gonna cost a million? Just to relocate it?
Wow.
So what's buried under what?
The infiltration thing, you know, the big stone and plastic bottles, or whatever you call them?
Yeah.
Right underneath the pad, right where you want to put them. So we have no Chick-fil-A coming, I was wondering why that, been waiting and waiting and waiting and-
High School was waiting for that.
I know, I told Phil, go to Accu or across the street, but, is anything coming of that, you haven't heard, Kate, have you?
Isn't that gonna be medical facility or something?
Yeah, but that's been kicking around, originally he wanted to do it, and Dave Norton said he couldn't, and then the guy went somewhere else, but-
Oh, really?
I haven't heard of anything on that. Well, they could put it at Pier One.
Why is Pier One leaving?
Pier One's starting to shut, I don't know if they're shutting the Norwood store down, but they're gonna, they're closing a lot.
That is Norwood, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, that's, but it's still close enough. I'll drive there for-
Not gonna get the tax revenue, though.
With fries.
That's it, nothing else?
No.
So we keep the meeting on the sixth?
We don't have anything on unless we receive an A and R, and then I'd have to call it right now.
Okay. I don't have any plans, but-
Believe me, Sarah, we knew that many years ago for Betty, because she was the school nurse, and I'm not, and I want to go on vacation, okay?
Nothing on the consultants.
No, no, I have to start again, we just split.
We have, we don't sign in the same order, are we?
I don't think it matters, so.
Motion to adjourn?
Um, can't until he finishes signing.
Sorry.
That's it, get him in.
Not rushing anyone, sorry, take your time.
And then Rolls-Royce couldn't do it.
Miss, I write out my middle name?
Yeah, 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 I'm done, my name's on there. I'm going.
Phil's got a long name, too.
Those are dogs. Do you have pictures of your kids? No.
Foundry seeded, Carl. Foundry seeded. The only area I'm getting water is the corner way down in the left. But other than that, it's all that other area.
Put a board in it to bring it up so they could do the harvest.
I think they took it out, yeah, because we've noticed it was flooded bad.
Oh, so they raised the levels?
And then we noticed it went down, so they must have taken the board out. Still getting water in the corner, but otherwise, it's the same. Everywhere else is fine.
All the beets will still-
Noisy as ever, likely.
Franklin State Forest last Sunday, when I went to walk with my-
My young one's funny, though, he's like, because he's at that awkward, skinny, he's tall, he's, you know, funny looking, he's not, well, yeah.
So the last few you already did?
So I just have this here?
Yeah. Yeah.
See this?
Do what?
Is the, Clark?
What?
Do the fields have to come back before us?
They said they don't. There's more people up in those fields right today than there will be when they get done.
So what happened with the apartment building that said they had to come back before us? The one down by the train station?
They, they got, yeah, they got a little issue there. What happened is they didn't have their plan signed.
No, I understand, but where are they, is what I'm saying.
Okay. Another plan signed, so council said that they should come back for modification, which we were gonna do. Then they just said, well, we're gonna add three more handicaps, take this one away, redo the curb. So now, that's a revised site plan.
Right.
So they have to come in front of us to find out, is it a major mine? To me, why spend that extra time, just go for the, wanna be done with it? All right, they added pocket, right, Kyle?
Just assume it's a major, you're saying?
No, they, I think they...
No, but I mean, if you come in, the night you say if it's a mine, okay, mine, you come back, normally, they come back with a plan and do it at the next meeting, but if, you might as well just get all of it at once.
I'm not sure if the county changed, Jack, or they just modified the most normally entrance, they modified it so it would be...
They said in the letter that, hey, I mean, Yanovich wanted three more handicap spaces, so they added three, took one away, and, but the problem we have there about our policies, they got a variance for their pocket.
Oh, so they gotta do this, oh, Jesus, they gotta go and modify the variance?
I would, I, that would be my guess. Variance. They got a variance for less...
You never change, do you, Phil?
No, I didn't.
No, you don't.
Yeah, careful of that thing, it triples.
Yeah, that's what happened with the A and R.
Well, it was very rough.
Yeah, because didn't we pay for it, meaning after they got through digging it up, or the, was that part of the whole?
I have to say, well, the EPA evidently took the man for period of time to do that work. But if you've heard, I don't know that they did any construction.
They had, yeah, I know, they had it pretty much close. They had to do some stuff for the wetlands requirement that they hadn't done. All they had to do was tell everybody that the P was gonna go in there, but landers kept pushing them.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All set, Mr. Chairman?
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Oppose, aye? You want to...